A little minutes late here, but I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency, and it is Tuesday, December 9th, 2014. We met in closed session at 6 o'clock this evening for a couple of issues that are noticed in your agenda, and we have nothing to report out on either of those. And at this point, if I could have the call, the roll call.
Councilmember Harvey, here. Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Mayor DeLasso?
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much, and if everybody could rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. [inaudible] We are now at item one of our agenda, which is the approval of minutes of the November 25, 2014 regular meeting, and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
Move to approve.
On what item?
On minutes.
On the minutes? Please, come up.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, council. For the benefit of the public, I'm a former Kattati council member, George Berich, and I'd like to ask the council to make a change to the minutes on item five. It states that George Berich was opposed to item five. That was not the case. That's not what the record shows. I asked specifically if the council would table the matter for 30 days, allow the other bidders to bid on that contract, and bring it back. So if you could just make that change, that I asked for it to be tabled.
All right. Thank you very much. And if we could so note that change, it looks like it's being typed in as we speak. So there is that one change, and with that, if someone is willing to make a motion in a second?
Move to approve with the noted change?
At second.
You have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Right, seen no discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Show it's a 5-0 vote in favor to approve the minutes with the change that's noted. And we will go to Tammy now for the housekeeping items.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following: silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised to the chamber and always carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the west, from the designated media area along the west wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table just inside the entrance to the chamber. Place your completed speaker card in the designated tray located by the deputy city clerk, and when their name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Great, thank you very much. And just for the audience, so you know, these are just general courtesies that are done at every public meeting. There's any comments, yes, please. Mr. Berich.
Thank you, sir. I think it's very interesting that Mr. DeLasso would interpret these on his own to state them as courtesies when, for almost two years, I've been trying to find out where they all came from. These, these rules, these items, these courtesies, whatever they are, whatever flavor it is this week, are not put together for the benefit of the public. They're put together to help the council in some way, but we still don't understand where they ever came from. I've been asking, who voted on them? Why wasn't there a workshop on any of these items? Why wasn't the public ever consulted before you have enacted these policies and procedures and items and courtesies and so forth? And I can't get a straight answer. And the public needs to know that almost every other city that I can think of comes up with a policy like this and discusses it in, discusses it in an open forum, opens it up for public comment, discusses the matter, makes changes, and votes on it and puts it into a formal policy. For some reason that I can't understand, the city of Kattati doesn't want to do things that way. They kind of want to do it behind closed doors. We've seen these items take all kinds of forms from the very beginning. They were housekeeping items. A number of them have changed. The language has changed, and we want to know who's changing them, who's coming up with them, and what is the process? And I appreciate the fact that you open up this item every month for me to comment on it, but I've been courteous. I've been polite. I've offered to meet with you in private or have a workshop and find out if we can do this the right way. I would love to see the council come back and review this every couple of years, find out what's working, what's not working, what the public would like to see, but I can't get the council to do that, and it's an embarrassment. This is a town, you're representing the people of this town, and you're acting in the public's trust, and this is the most irresponsible way to run government that I can think of. I've always said, I think you're all better than this, and then you can do better, and I would just ask you to just go back to the drawing board, do it over, and put together a policy where it's in writing, it's in our policy manual, and it's something that you can be proud of, because right now, it's, it's, it's pretty weak and it's pretty useless. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And as I do every two weeks, not every month, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on this item? Once again, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on housekeeping items and move into announcements. Let's get my glasses on. This is a sign of old age, it's getting harder. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, you can call the library at 584-9121. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and also by appointment. For more information, you can call 794-0304. Did I switch sides? The annual community toy drive is underway. Donations of unwrapped toys and gift cards are being accepted at the Kattati Police Department. This year, Santa Claus and his elves will arrive in Kattati police cars and Rancho Adobe fire engines to deliver gifts to each family. To request assistance for your family or someone you know who lives in Rona Park, Kattati, or Pangrove, call the voicemail system for the Rotary Club of Rona Park, Kattati at And now we'll go into item two, which is the Declaration of Results, General Municipal Election and Swearing In of Newly Elected Council Members. And I believe I'm turning that over to, waiting for some eyes to show up, to our city clerk, city manager?
Yes. The, the city of Kattati held a regular municipal election on November 4th, 2014, and the County Registrar of Voters has certified that election and declared that the candidates who have been elected to the seats of city council for city of Kattati are Mark Landman and John Moore, and your, the recommendation is for you to adopt a motion to receive and file that statement of certification of the vote, and then to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the consolidated general municipal election held on November 4th.
Very good. And before, do we have any questions for staff at this point? Probably not, this seems pretty basic. I'd like to go ahead and open this for public comment, so if anyone has any comments, now's the time. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment on this and bring it back to council.
So moved. I have a second.
It was awfully quick, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Nope. Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show it's a 5-0 vote in favor. Thank you very much. And that was the motion to receive and file, and you should have been a little clearer, was that for both?
Motion to receive and file, the Snowm County Clerk's statement, and the adopt resolution declaring the results.
Are you on?
Yeah.
Yeah, you are.
Sorry.
Are we good with the one motion for both adoptions?
They were read.
Right.
Yes, as long as the record is clear that the vote is the same on both, it's fine.
Okay, we are good to go. And now back to our city clerk.
Yes, I'm going to step up to the podium, and I'll call down our newly elected council members one at a time to present their certificates of election and administer the oath of office. Councilmember Landman, if you would step down.
Age before beauty.
Councilmember Landman, it's my pleasure as deputy city clerk to present you with your certificate of election, certified that at the general municipal election of November 4th, 2014, that you were duly elected as council member for the city of Kattati. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Here is your certificate.
Thank you.
And I will now administer the oath of office. I'll administer the oath of office, you'll sign, and then we'll get, get to seat you as a new council member, newly elected council member. So put this in your left hand, and that you'll use to respond to the oath, and-
Test one, two.
Are you on?
Sounds good. Can you all hear me out there?
Yes.
If you would raise your right hand. Do you, Mark Landman, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States-
I do.
-and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations. Councilmember Landman, if you would sign this oath.
And I will turn you off.
Okay. Okay. And I will present to you your oath, and you have your certificate. Congratulations, you may take your seat as newly elected council member. Councilmember Moore, if you would step down.
First, it's my pleasure to present to you your certificate of election. At the regular municipal election for the city of Kattati on November 4th, 2014, you were duly elected as a council member for the city of Kattati, and it's my pleasure to certify that result as deputy city clerk. So I'd like to present to you your certificate of election.
Thank you.
And congratulations. And now we'll administer the oath of office. This is for your response, hold that in your left hand, raise your right hand. Do you, John Moore, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations. If you would sign here. All right, I'll take that from you. Present to you your certificate and your oath. Congratulations, you may take your seat.
All right, thank you very much, Tammy. Too, now's the time, if anyone has any comment, I'd go ahead and open the public comment on what just transpired. Seeing no one wishing to comment, we will go ahead and close that section. Okay, thank you very much. And we are now at the approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes?
There are no changes.
None, thank you. All righty. Now we are on to citizens' business. I'm going to read just a little note here before we get into that. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this time period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. And I have several speaker cards this evening, and we'll start with Eric Kirkman, please.
I'll start off with something that is, an item I bring up pretty regularly, the sheep across the street. There used to be six sheep, and Jenny Pletty was able to monitor them and take care of them. At the last count, I saw seven water tubs, and there are far more than six sheep. Most people that have any background in livestock know that sheep tend to eat everything down to the nub, so there's nothing but mud left. You might want to go back to the old days and just have six sheep. Might be easier to manage, might take less water, and might leave the ground able to be more than a mud puddle. Speaking of sheep, I'm a little concerned that you folks are like a town with no hat size trying to copy Rona Park, taking their motions on such things as parties and just duplicating what they're doing, and if you're going to do that, you might as well duplicate everything they do. I don't know that there are that many parties here that are out of control, or that there's that much need to copy Rona Park and everything you do. Some things that you might want to do on a big scale is disaster planning. I'm a little bit concerned that many staff members live in Cloverdale or even out of the county, and I'm hoping that if you have a disaster plan, it addresses the issue of potentially having staff away. If there's an earthquake, or flood, or some other issue, staff mayor may not be able to even be here, and as such, you should have a plan for what you do if they're not available. In my time here, we've had the city roads closed due to flooding. Unfortunately, somebody lost their life in the storm drain, and there's a need for a plan. Certainly, we have to face the potential for earthquake and flood and other issues. There have been, when this was a middle school next door, there were issues where people being pursued during the time there was a school in sessions. There's a need for planning, and I'm hoping that you folks do maintain a plan, but also take a look and update it on occasion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have Noah Moore.
You'll excuse me, I'm not used to speaking in public. I'm a resident of Kattati and grew up here, and there is a house that has been abandoned at, I believe the address is 50 West Kattati, and it's been abandoned for about a decade. My understanding is that either the city of Kattati or the utility company red flagged the house, and that the owner, who was renting it out, decided not to make the improvements to get rid of the code violation, and now it's just sat there. Anyways, it has some mattresses, and it's overgrown with weeds, and the roof is caving in, and I tried to be neighborly and say that, you know, I'd help clean up the yard, but he never responded to me. Anyways, I'm just not sure if this is the appropriate forum, but just like to bring that to the attention.
No, appreciate that.
All right.
Yep.
That's all I had to say, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, cards. Lori Alderman.
Hi, I'm Lori Alderman of 473 Maple, and mine's more a question on the street improvement. There was, it seems there was a delay, and I was wondering, because I, when I talked to Mr. Obed, in the summer, when it was approved, it was supposed to be done before the rainy season, and now, I'm, the other question is, will it be beneficial during the rainy season to still have it done, or are we waiting to the spring?
Can I ask you specifically, you were talking about a street improvement, or just the street improvements, because there's a bigger project out there?
The biggest-
The bigger project?
The outlining ones.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have no other cards? Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Berich.
Counsel, in the past, I've asked about what happened to the vision statement that was behind Mr. Moore over here on the wall. Kattati has a vision statement that was voted on by a number of city council members, and it proudly was on the wall behind us for the longest time, for years, but it's been taken down. I don't remember all the verbiage of the vision statement itself, but the fact is, it's not there, and I've yet to get an answer why that important document is not there. I hope it's not offensive to anybody, or not politically correct anymore, I can't think of why it's not been put back up there. But anyway, that needs to go back up there. Also, I hope the council is also aware, and the public should be aware, that an ethics complaint has been filed against Mr. DeLasso for his conduct at the last meeting in violation of subsection five of Kattati's Ethics Code. And I would ask tonight, where is the time clock that was so reminiscent of this, these meetings here? We had a time clock here that was to assist the public in knowing where they were on their times, so we could wrap it up and so forth, without any needless interjections from the council members, and hopefully we'll find out why we no longer have a time clock. They're relatively inexpensive, and I'd like an answer to that. There was also a time when the agenda packets included some correspondences from the public to City Hall. When I was on the council, we saw that drop off to almost nothing, and I brought that fact up, that we no longer see in the packets, letters of complaints, letters of praise. So sometimes we see the letters of praise, but we don't see the letters of complaints. We don't see any copies of any emails, any constructive criticism, and that is an important part of the record, I think, that the public should be able to review. The city gets a fair amount of letters, correspondences, that are not confidential. There's no reason that they should be held back, although it would, I would take it that the city does have the right to withhold certain, certain documents that are confidential and may have some kind of legal significance, but for the most part, the criticisms and complaints and so forth should be in the packet, and they should be shared with the public, and they're not. And, and that's very unfortunate. I'd like to see that changed. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for those comments. Is there anyone else who didn't have a chance to fill out a card that wishes to come up? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on citizens' business. And it looked like there was a couple of follow-up items. Does the acting city manager have any comments on any of those?
Yeah, I'll just, so one of the questions that was asked on the status of the pavement project, that the, the street repair part of the project can proceed during the winter. The slurry seal, like the top coat, would have to wait until the spring, because it needs the proper temperatures, otherwise it doesn't set right, and it doesn't work. Also, I will, another one of the comments was about the EOC. The city does have an emergency operations plan, and we regularly train with Rancho Adobe and Rona Park as part of a JPA on emergency scenarios, so that's also going on.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments from council at this point? Councilmember Harvey?
I'm waiting for our acting city manager. Is it possible for you to get in contact with Mr. Moore on what can and can't happen with that residency?
Yes, yeah, I apologize, absolutely.
He left.
Okay.
He did leave, yeah.
All right, well, we'll try to locate him and then try to figure out what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Yes, councilmember Landman?
Question, a quick statement. I think I know the answer to this, I'm pretty sure it's no, but I just want to confirm with staff, any emails or letters to us specifically for council items are either available in the packet and/or at the meeting, depending on when we receive them? Have we missed or purposely left any out, to your knowledge?
Because I haven't seen that come up in five years. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of that. So I just wanted to confirm that my perception was correct. I'm not aware of letters for council, other than, other than what you see in the packets. Good, because I agree, you'd expect to see those. Of course, sometimes we get these rather late, and sometimes they're not going to be in the printed packet. Sometimes we don't have all the pieces of the printed packet till almost the last day, too, so that's not unusual, trying to put these together at the last minute. Lastly, a quick statement as far as copying Rona Park. You don't have to worry about that one, you're not going to see much of this, I don't think, certainly not from me, and I would guess not from the rest of this council or this community either, because I don't think there'd be any will for that. So appreciate the concern, want to set you at ease on that.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Then we'll move on. We'll go to direction on future agenda items. Does anyone have any items at this point? Yes? Councilmember Landman?
I don't know if Mr. Moore has any.
Oh.
Did you have anything you wanted to bring?
Do you have any new, future agenda items?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I think we have a lot at our place right now with all of our recruitments that we're going through and things like that.
Okay. You did, you are?
I actually do have something, unfortunately, it's something that has a lot of leeway. It's not, doesn't have to happen right, it was, I think there's room to fit it in, but it's interesting. Having had the advantage, the privilege really, to have a chance, like we both did, walking and talking to so many of you out there, one thing that's been made very clear, which I think we all knew was kind of there, but it's been brought to my mind even more clearly, is the concern in almost everybody's neighborhood about speeding. And it's interesting to see, it doesn't matter if you live in the smallest of neighborhoods, the slowest of traffic, or even some of the busiest, you live right across the street from all of us, try and get out in the side streets. Everybody seems to have some very valid concerns about speeding, and we, of course, have been somewhat held back by the economy and budget to respond to that as much as we perhaps historically had, and now that we're in a position where we can. I was going to suggest that it might be time to ask staff to work together, of course, in concert with the chief and everybody in staff, to take a look at what things we could do maybe to try to improve in the various neighborhoods throughout Kattati. And that would be certainly some short-term actions, some of which I see as already happening, I think, and in the plans, and then perhaps in a longer term. And I suggest this because I think it's relatively low cost, it's very doable, and most importantly, because I think it would really add substantially to the quality of life for people in the neighborhoods. Would be a very good thing. Next to making gophers go away, I don't know if there's anything that's more requested from the folks and the public, so just something if staff has time, perhaps in the next quarter, we could come back with something like that, roughly a timeframe like that. We certainly have to get through the holidays and catch up on some of the other things, but if council agrees, I think there'd be a lot of value in that.
All right. Anyone else with any future agenda items? No? Okay, we will now move into our section where we welcome our honorary mayor. Is Caitlin Slat here this evening? Way in the back, please, come on up to the podium, tell us a little bit about yourself, where you're going to school, what you're doing, anybody who may have come with you, and then we'll have this great opportunity for a photo op.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Slat. I have lived in Kattati my entire life, and I attend Technology Middle School. I am 14 years old, and I am in eighth grade. Some of my interests are music, but mainly art and soccer. I have been playing soccer for Rona Park Soccer League since 2006, and I play competitive soccer. I am looking forward to attending Rancho Kattati High School next year as a freshman. I am not sure what college I would like to attend, but when I'm older, I would like to be in some sort of organization to help people, especially kids. I have always loved kids. Right now, my family and I sponsor a child in Ecuador through an organization called Compassion. It is a great association that helps you sponsor a child, write them letters, and it pays for them to go to school. Well, that's a little bit about me, and thank you so much for this great opportunity.
Excellent, okay, don't leave. We're now going to have a few questions for you. I'll start down with councilmember Moore, if you have any questions or comments.
Welcome, Caitlin, and congratulations on the honorary mayor. When you said that was a little bit about you, you weren't kidding, were you? Well, it's encouraging that you're playing soccer. I know a couple of soccer players in my family, and it's a great sport in Rona Park, and Rancho Kattati have a great program for that, so I wish you well in that. Are you familiar with why, when you sponsored a family, it was out of Ecuador?
Mm-hmm.
Why is that?
Because my family is from Ecuador, and so I've always wanted to visit there, and so when we found out that there was a kid that needed help there, we wanted to help them.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I think it's wonderful that you want to be involved with children. I think at your age, it would be wonderful for you to help with mentoring some of the kids, maybe reading at the library, or assisting some of the kids that need help at the schools, tutoring and things like that, so it's a way to kind of get involved, but I think that's wonderful, because they, they need someone to look up to, and you seem very eager- someone to look up to, and you seem very eager to want to help them and make them succeed. So I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Councilmember Lammon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Kaitlyn, thank you for coming here tonight. So, quick question. When you were talking about yourself, you mentioned some interests, and you had some diverse ones. You talked about being interested in music and art, which go together a bit, I think, but then also being very interested. I really could tell you like your soccer. You're definitely into that. And you talked about in general in the future, what really appeals to you is finding a way to help kids. And I'm wondering, as you look at that, do you see something? Obviously, that could be something to do with mentoring, teaching, but I'm curious if you're thinking of it's more sports or if it's more music and art. Which one do you think is more the direction you would see that you'd take in the future?
I'm not really sure. I'd kind of be open to both of them, I guess. Like, just anything with kids and then, because I have little cousins and I'm always like helping them around with things, and I just love just helping kids with like anything.
Good. Well, you know, I think you hit the probably, you just gave me the best answer, saying you have your interests, but you also, you've got it figured out. You know you need to stay open, because I guess at 14, there's a world of opportunities ahead of you, and you're just going to see where your choices take you. So thank you for sharing that with us, and I'm going to wish you the absolute best.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Vice Mayor Skilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, welcome tonight, and I know it can be a little bit intimidating even for adults, and you've done a really great job standing there, and at least you don't look nervous. So, great job. And also, I would encourage you to, I had the opportunity to spend a spring break in Ecuador with some friends of mine whose mother was from Ecuador. So it was great because she had sort of the inside track, and we got to actually stay at the coast and then up in the mountains in the capital of Quito. And so it's fantastic if you get an opportunity to go there. There's so much to see in such a small area. So I just wanted to encourage, and I always love to encourage world travel anyway. So congratulations with your honorary mayorship, and it's great that you're already so involved with the sports and also balancing it out with the art and the music, so it sounds like you've got a really well-rounded background. So thank you very much for coming here tonight and sharing your story with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I have to say, you are incredibly lucky, but let me explain why. You're so lucky to be the honorary mayor in December because there's only one meeting you have to come to, not two, because usually we quiz you and ask you to come back. We give you homework at the first meeting, then you have to come back and report out to everybody that's here. So you don't have to do that unless you want to just maybe make a statement to the newspaper of what you did as honorary mayor, but I'll leave that up to you. You guys can figure it out. I will tell you that on Monday, December 22nd, I've been involved in planning with a group called the California Homemakers Association. We're going to be putting food boxes together for those that are in need in the Cattati, Rona Park, Pengrove, even Petaluma, so on, area. And we're just going to be right behind City Hall here in the old middle school, and if you or your friends are looking for some time to do some things, December 22nd may not be the best time of year for something like this, but it's really important to the people who've signed up and who are in need of food. So we'll be putting boxes of food together, starting around the nine o'clock hour, and then some people, by the time they're all packaged up, will be driving out and delivering them. So if you or have some friends, you want to come down and help us pack up boxes, that would be great. Do you guys, at middle school, do you have to earn community service hours? I know you do in high school.
No, just for high school, I think.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if you can bank it if you came and we signed off on something, but if you can, that would be great. So anyway, just keep that in mind if you're available. And is there anyone that is here tonight that you'd like to introduce?
Well, my mom and my dad are here, and then my principal, Ms. Tattman.
Excellent. All right. So what we're going to do now is we're going to come down and give you this honorary mayor certificate, complete with a City Cattati button. And now's the photo op time. You don't need to stand under the media sign. You can come over here and get a better picture if you need to. So come on up right over here. All of us coming out. Here. You got a photo op. You got a shape. Actually, we're trying to get you through this very, very wide. Knowing full well that this is a school night, you're welcome to stay here as late as you like, but you better get home and do your homework and make sure that's all done. Just a little warning. And we are now going to the consent calendar where we have items three, four, five, and six. And I'm going to first open this up for public comment, and I have a speaker card here for Mr. Neil Hancock for item five.
Yes, good evening, council. I wanted to speak to this item because I first reported it in 2013 and noticed on the road. It wasn't in the packet that was delivered to the public yesterday, and I specifically emailed through today to ask if I could have a copy of the staff report. So this is the first, this is the first time I've seen this staff report coming into this meeting. It hasn't been noticed properly. This undercutting of the road, it's in an area that is critical for water passages. It had some flooding in the past. The undercutting was probably because of the widening on Highway 101. There was over an acre that was added of impervious surface on 101, and the mitigation for that was done in Santa Rosa. So there's more water rushing off, and we're getting into the problem with Little Cattati Creek being an urban creek and degradation. So it's had a couple of years, and now we have the rains and we're suddenly fixing it. And I know we have budget problems in the city, but I just am very unhappy that it's taken this long to fix it and that we're fixing it during the rains. So I'd just like to bring that to your attention. I think overall, it probably, we want to have it approved and fixed as soon as possible, but it is the wrong time of year to fix it, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you very much.
Sorry. All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Berich, please. Is there one particular item or?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to speak briefly on item three. In reading the packet, I did not see a total figure for salary and benefits combined for the total budget for the city manager's position. It shows a monthly amount in salary, but I would like to get a total amount, including salary and benefits, for the position of city manager. That's my first question. And my second question is, I understand that we leased a Toyota Prius for former city manager Diane Thompson, and I understand that Damian Obed drives a Chevrolet. And I want to know what we're going to do with the Toyota Prius, and whether he gets a car allowance in spite of the Prius, or whether he gets the Prius, or whether the Prius gets sent back to the leasing company. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hold on just a second. I'm looking for something here. Okay. Was there anyone else that had anything under the consent calendar? Now, I'm going to go ahead and close that, and before we bring this up for any votes, were there any comments from staff, anything needing to be addressed at this point? If none, that's fine.
I just wanted to say that the bank or the shoulder repair item, it was, as you know, because of budgetary pressures. It was closely monitored for the last year, and when Measure G passed, it's enabled us to move forward on it, and it just so happens that this is the time of year. It's happening. But it'll be closely monitored, so that there's no problems.
Okay.
But it is a critical infrastructure improvement, as Mr. Hancock had said.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Let's bring this back to council then. We are on the consent calendar of items three, four, five, and six. Is there anything that needs to be pulled, or are we making a motion for all of the items? Yes?
I'd be willing to pull item five, except for if I'm not missing, I think the question of what was involved with in terms of financing and delays to work on this project was answered, and then in terms of monitoring and also timeline, unless there's a desire for, to hear a presentation, you know, I don't see a need to pull it then. I'm not, I'm seeing, yeah, okay. Just wanted to double-check because I thought I heard the questions answered, but I wanted to make sure, because obviously, that's a concern, especially with the storm that we think we have coming the next couple of days.
So if there's no further discussion, I would move to approve the consent calendar items three, four, five, and six.
Second?
Motion, second. Is there any further discussion on these items? Nope, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? Please show it's a 5-0 vote in favor for items three, four, five, and six, and we are now moving into the regular agenda. And item seven is the design review committee appointments, and we'll turn that over to the community development director, Vicky Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. We, as you know, we have a six-member design review committee, and there are staggered appointment terms, and three of them come up for reappointment at a time. And the composition of the design review committee, some of the positions are discipline-specific and some of them are at-large positions. The ones that were, or that are up for reappointment at this time are two discipline-specific positions and one at-large position. And so it's one of the architectural positions and the energy solar position that are up for reappointment, and the at-large position that is currently held by Eris Weaver. We had two standing members that requested to be reappointed, Lars Langberg, who holds the architectural, one of the architectural positions, and Eris Weaver, who holds the at-large position. That leaves, and, excuse me, we had two new applicants in addition to Lars and Eris who requested to be reappointed. We had two new applicants. Their applications are in your packet. Unfortunately, one of those, John Bergren, withdrew his application just this morning, so it leaves us with the two standing members as well as one new member, Cynthia George. And Ms. George is in the audience tonight. Eris Weaver unfortunately had to be out of town on business, so she won't be here for us this evening. And so just real quickly, the design review committee is a committee of the city council, and they make recommendations on design-specific issues to the planning commission and then on to the council if the level of permitting requires that. They help us in each of these disciplines and with community values to ensure that we get the very best projects that we can, and I think that they do a great job. I think the disciplines that are represented here in our committee makeup do, provide us with the breadth of expertise that we need. In that we have the energy solar position vacant, the city council could opt to either fill that with an at-large applicant, or we could fill the, we could continue to recruit for that position in hopes that we draw someone with that expertise. And I will just point out, of the candidates that we have, Lars Langberg is the only qualified candidate for the architectural position, and we have the two candidates that would equally qualify for the at-large position, Eris Weaver and Ms. George. And if we chose to continue to recruit for the energy solar position, we could fill the two, fill two of those positions and then continue to recruit. That is an option for the council tonight. And the motion that you would, or the process that you would go through, the mayor would nominate the qualifying members, and the motion that the council would make would be to approve the mayor's nomination. And that's a pretty brief staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, especially related to the energy solar position.
Great. Thank you very much, and we'll get to some questions, I think, from council. It, I'm very pleased to see the number of folks that have applied, and I do want to hear from Ms. George and just have her come up and talk a little bit about herself and her qualifications. I think, I don't know how the council members feel, but it seems like there's a lot of PV projects that are going to be happening that we've already approved, and I don't think we're going to see the end of that. I really see, hopefully, would see more of that coming down the road, and I think the timing is such, it'd be great if, you know, we could find somebody, and maybe it's difficult to do, you know, I get that, but for the energy and solar position, seems like that would be a really important one to try to fill with that level of expertise in the industry. But does council have any questions for staff? Yes, councilmember Harvey?
So I know that one of the requirements is that we have a majority B residence. That's a little bit difficult with the number six, because it tends to be, you know, an even number. So that would make you tend to have to have many more residents, because you couldn't have it split three and three, correct? Which would mean that if we get a solar person, they have to be a resident. So that sort of limits who we might have in that expertise. And I was just wondering, you know, how, you know, how could we deal with that? Because I agree with you, I think it's important, given where we're headed with solar, that we have that expertise, but you're kind of even narrowing it down even more if you say it has to be a solar person and they have to be a residence. There's probably someone out there, but, you know. And secondly, have we gone to the various solar places? Because there's quite a few of them, and, you know, kind of let them know that this is available. I know we put it generally out there, but have we targeted some of the solar companies? Yeah, recruited, yeah. Those are my questions.
You want to respond now or wait for more questions?
Sure, I can respond now. You're right, it is a little difficult in a city our size to have those, to have both the resident and the disciplines represented, and I believe that's why the, the way the municipal code reads, it says the majority of residents to the extent possible. So the way it's comprised currently, we're half and half. The position that was held by Edie Robbins in the energy solar, she actually was not a resident either. So it is a challenge, and we don't always make that. For the, for the planning commission, certainly, you would want them to be residents. For the disciplines specific, because they're not making decisions, they're making recommendations. I don't think it's been a problem.
And have we targeted any solar companies?
And, yes, I'm sorry. No, we have not. We did general advertisements, and the city clerk knows exactly where they were advertised. We advertised at Sonoma State and the general places that we do, but we didn't target solar, and we could certainly do that.
Okay. Councilmember Lammon, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
No, I think, I think councilmember Harvey's got my questions answered. It sounds like, obviously, we have some flexibility, both in the residential requirements as well as the discipline-specific aspects, but obviously, the local and appropriate background aspects are ideal. So trying to get for local with the appropriate backgrounds is the ideal to try to get, and the question is, how much time and effort do we want to spend to do that? Or if not, then we can go to a Plan B. So I think that's clear for me now. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Moore, any questions for staff?
I do have a question. If we were to fill the solar position, energy position with an at-large pending recruitment, we would have the ability to say, okay, we've located an energy solar expert, and your at-large appointment is now termed?
No, and I realize that in my staff report, it was probably worded a little awkwardly. We would fill the architectural position and the at-large position and not fill the energy solar pending another recruitment, so we would have to bring you back qualifying energy solar pending another recruitment, so we would have to bring you back qualifying energy solar candidates for refor appointment at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Skidlin, any questions at this point?
No, but thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to make sure, clarify, because I was a little bit unclear. The residence requirement is a mandatory requirement, so a majority of the members shall be citizens of Kattati, to the extent possible you're to try and fill the disciplinarity needs. But under the provision as worded, the residence takes precedence over the discipline.
Okay, thank you very much. So now I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'd like Cynthia George to come up and make a presentation, tell us about yourself, qualifications, your interests in wanting to get on this Design Review Board.
Hello, I'm Cynthia George. Qualifications, sounds like I'm qualified in the sense that I live in Kattati, and I've lived here for a good, what, 11 years, I think, and it's my second time living in Kattati. I lived in Kattati when my daughter was young, so I lived here for six years, and I love About myself, I was like a high-flying career woman for a while and then settled down to have a family, so now I'm a high-flying housewife. And my son is my daughter is 30, and she lives in LA, and my son is 15, almost 16, and I find myself with some time, and I'm just exploring some interests, and I am interested in helping my community. I'm a powerhouse researcher. I have solar on my house. I know that doesn't make me an expert, but we just got it this summer, and I did have to do a lot of research for that. So do you have any questions?
Well, one thing, I will say that it sounds like you're very good at critical decision-making because you moved back to Kattati. That was a very wise move.
I insisted on living in Kattati when we came back here from Davis, first choice, Kattati.
See, that's that was a smart move right there, so.
Grew up in Petaluma, by the way.
Yeah, before you before you leave, any questions from any council members at this point? Nope?
I do I do have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
What is a powerhouse researcher?
That is a powerhouse housewife who has some time on her hands and would like to forego vacuuming and such things and explore where do I get the best solar on my house? Or I don't know. I do a lot of research on all kinds of stuff. I spend a lot of time on the Internet looking at, I don't know, the weather today or I'm drawing a blank about all of the things that I've been researching lately, and as soon as I walk out the door, I'll have a list, and I can bring them back next time if you would like to see that, but.
No, I just didn't know if that was a some sort of a certification or
It should be.
Or a
It should be. Ask my husband.
Avenue of education, so.
Yeah.
So primarily a lot of Internet surfing.
Oh, water softener, that's what I'm researching right now. I'm trying to fix my water softener myself, and so I've had to like go to the manufacturer, and I've had to go online, I ordered a manual, I took the valve thing apart, put a new gasket on it, leaking somewhere else, so now I'm, you know, that's the kind of stuff I do. I'm kind of gadget person, and so fixing my sewing machines or just how to make something. So, yeah, lots of research.
Well, I
Uncertified.
I certainly think it's encouraging to have people that want to participate in a community. What prompted your interest in the Design Review, or was it just because a position was available?
It was kind of a fluke that I thought, honestly. So the past election, I started paying attention. Not that I never did pay attention, but I started looking at different aspects of the election, and I'll just say that I might have made a mistake. I went on to a forum, Independent Kattati, and I thought it was sort of an open forum for just like broad. Turned out it wasn't, and I think that's kind of what got me kind of sparked about the city and politics. And I personally was supporting George over there. I've met him several times and had discussions with him, and I really appreciate anybody who wants to get involved and has a commitment, and I feel like he's got a lot of tenacity. And I politically, I'm really developing myself. I, you know, I really need more research in that area. But having done that, I was on the on the website, and I saw Design Review Committee, and I was thinking, wow, I have three properties in Kattati, and I'm currently slowly researching a remodel of a house, and I was thinking, I might be able to learn something here about, you know, living in Kattati and, you know, fixing up this house and whatever else goes on around town in in terms of design. It just sounds really interesting and possibly up my alley, and I do have the time. And I wanted to mention, I'm also on the Valparaiso HOA, and I make all the meetings, and I make sure that in what, I'm bumping up on two years of doing that, I mean, in the second year, and I haven't missed a meeting, and, you know, treat my commitments really seriously. So this seems like something I'd be interested in doing. If there's not a better qualified candidate, I do have a full life, so it won't kill me or anything. If if you choose somebody else, that's totally fine, but I thought I'd throw my hat in there.
Do you have a a preconceived notion of what you think some of the issues regarding our downtown specific plan, maybe the general plan might be if they were to come before Design Review?
I, you know, I don't. I'm really open to it, you know. I did I did take a look at it with a critical eye, and I'm I confess, I'm not an expert in this area, so it would be very hard for me to be critical about it. I mean, as far as I think it should be attractive. I grew up in Petaluma, and I'm not trying to say we should be like Petaluma, but I do like the charm and the feel of it. If we can afford to do something great, and and also I'm a big advocate of like what other people in our town want too, you know. I mean, it's not really about what I want. I mean, George didn't make it on the on the council. I'm not bitter, you know. I I mean, I don't know. No, I don't think I have a preconceived notion or a bias or anything like that. I just want to get involved and learn and help.
Well, I certainly commend your your desire and your interest to be part of serving in a on a commission. Thank you.
Yeah, any any other questions from anyone in the council? Nope. Seeing none, thanks very much, appreciate it. Oh.
Sorry, sorry.
I'm not looking this way, apparently, yes.
Apparently.
Vice Mayor.
No, that's okay. No, I was just going to bring to your attention too, I'm on the Library Advisory Board for the Kattati Warner Park Library as well, and they're always looking for people to get involved, and it sounds like since you've, you know, had children and so you've seen them grow, oop, going and moving through the educational system and the importance of libraries and resources and things like that, so I just wanted to put that out to you as well as another opportunity if this doesn't work out. I'm not I'm not saying which way I'm voting, I'm just indicating to you.
Oh, no, of course. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thank you for for your time and efforts coming here tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, anyone else? Yes, I better keep looking the wrong way, apparently, Councilmember.
Yeah, and you know, right now, because we sort of had a lack of interest and enough on our plates, the Community and Environment Commission, we sort of had to disband that. So that's another thing that ultimately, as we look to evolving the economy and changing things and kind of getting our feet back on our grounds and stuff, that's another opportunity that that also may be out there. So I really do appreciate you stepping forward, and I understand what it's like to have a little time on your hands and want to contribute back to your community, because that's really how I got involved and and started doing more with the community too. So I recognize that, and I really appreciate you stepping up to do that, and and this isn't the only opportunity, so I do want you, if this doesn't work out, I want you to make sure that you kind of stay kind of your ear to the ground, and hopefully staff will kind of let you know if other opportunities come up, because we certainly last week could have used more more hands even at the tree lighting, so there's even, you know, individual things that happen that we can always use hands with.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. Berich.
Thank you, sir. Trying to think where to start here. I would like to make a point to the council that these appointments are important, whether it be the Planning Commission or Design Review Commission and so forth, but it's I don't envy you. It's not easy to try to be objective, 100% objective. It's impossible to be 100% 100% objective in your position, but the fact is, is if any of you feel in your heart you can't be, you know, 99% objective in these appointments, you really do need to recuse yourself. And what I mean by that is this, back in 2009, there was a recall campaign against my my service on the council, and I received almost, what, 40% of the vote? And there were a lot of citizens in this town who did not support the recall because nothing illegal had happened. I was basically recalled because of my voting record and my stance on on certain items and so forth.
Mr. Berich?
And go ahead, sir, I'll allow you to interrupt.
It's not an interruption. I do run the meetings.
Yeah.
This is really off topic. If you could bring it back onto the topic, that'd be great.
Yes, right, okay. The fact is, is that if any of you have had an argument with any application on any of these commissions or boards about recalls or political nature, and you feel that you cannot make an objective decision on these appointments, I think you do need to recuse yourself. And I would ask you all to look deeply into your heart and say if you've had any argument or huge disappointment with these applicants on philosophical or political grounds, I would ask you to to recuse yourself. It wouldn't be anything to be embarrassed about, and if I was on the council, I would be thinking about that too, because politics can can be very, you know, be deep here in Kattati. But I think you need to look at people's qualifications rather than where they stood on a recall, Mr. Moore, as you well know.
I never mentioned some recall.
Okay.
No, but I understand you've, you know, you've had conversations with 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 people about this and so forth, so.
Thank you.
I would just ask you to take that into consideration. It's not an easy job, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you very much, and we only appoint based on qualifications, so that's great. Is there anyone else who has any comments on this topic? Nope, seeing no one. We'll close the public hearing and bring this back to council for a discussion. So I do, I don't know, I just want to kind of reiterate, you have comments, I'm sorry.
I just
Saw that hand going for the button, so.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to, because I did make an error that Robin corrected, I want to make sure that that it was clear for you all that for the discipline-specific positions, the architectural position, Lars Langberg would be the only qualified candidate. There are currently no qualified candidates for the energy solar discipline specific, and then so there are two candidates for the at-large position, and we could go back out and recruit specifically for the solar, energy solar position. They would just have to be a Kattati resident.
Which will be difficult, we understand, but, you know, there could be someone there, right?
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you for that.
I just wanted to clear.
And I just want to reiterate, I think the energy solar one, just because there there are a couple of existing projects, there are upcoming projects right here at our own facilities, and I know that there's a they may not be, there probably none of them are residents, but there's a business in town that is related to solar development. I know that, and I don't know if any of those employees, you know, happen to be Kattati residents, have no idea whatsoever, but it just seems like the expertise is there. So if, you know, tonight, if we appoint reappoint Lars to his position as the architect, and then one of our two Kattati residents that have applied for the at-large, one incumbent, one not, so you're saying the energy solar position, because of the first part of our policy, would have to be a Kattati resident? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Just to be clear on all that, okay? And again, you know, I think there could be a bit of a challenge there, but you never know, so. But council, what discussions on what we've heard? I'll start with Councilmember Landman.
Oh, and I just want to make sure, forgive me, but I want to be clear in this. I do get that then we are we have no flexibility on the residence requirements. We do have flexibility if ultimately there's a decision or an inability to get a local person who can serve as one of the applications specific in this case, energy solar, we could go with just making that an at-large, that's an option for still. Good, I want to make sure I had it right. Never hurts to check. Since we've been over it three times, there's always a chance I'm not the only one that wanted to double check, so it's a good thing. Yeah, I'd love to comment on this because as your Design Review liaison, I've had a chance to watch these people for a few years, and first of all, I can tell you that Mr. Langberg has just really done an excellent job, whereas we're very fortunate, we previously have had architects in Kattati, but when they became busy and weren't able to, Mr. Langberg stepping forward as well as Ms. Glenn Denning to take that those two positions, they really provide an invaluable service. They carry a large amount of weight there on a regular basis, and I can tell you in my estimation, they do a good job, so my recommendation certainly would, obviously, Mr. Langberg is certainly a good choice. As far as the at-large positions, this really applies to Ms. Weaver, but it also applies to Mr. West, too. They are relatively new, recently put on there. In the last year, things have been slow. We have had more council meeting canceled meetings in Design Review this year than the last few years, simply because of the major things. Of course, now it's starting to heap up heat up as it gets to the end of their term, so what I've seen, they've both showed up, they've and Ms. Weaver's done a very good job, been there, done the best she can. I believe she's the vice chair now, so she's been applying herself.
She is, yeah.
Yeah, but they have not had much of a chance to do much, so in a sense, they've hardly really had a chance to have a term yet, so. Anyway, and I should mention a thanks to Edie Robbins, who's been there for the half a decade I've been watching this, and really did a good job filling that solar thing for it, and it's a critical need at times. Sometimes your architects can pitch in and help out with that because of the broad base of knowledge they have, but it's a pretty specific thing, so. So bringing it back, I have to say, I am very impressed. I have no doubt about the can-do attitude. You totally sold me on that, Ms. George, and I do believe you would work hard, and I'm sure in this you'd learn something, because I found I'm always interested in going to these meetings, because it's interesting to watch these projects right at the beginning. But I think the key point, the objective point that comes out to me, and Councilmember Harvey, you kind of teased this out, and so did the mayor, actually, is that the energy solar piece keeps going up. We're going to see more and more of that, and it becomes an issue, and although I don't doubt there would be issue to try and fill that need without that, we do lose some critical ability on that team, and it does increase the load on the others and certainly architects, and it increases the chances that we won't have that ideal input early on something for it goes through. So I would suggest, I think, since we've only taken one pass at trying to find someone locally to fill this position, I would say at least one more swing at that personally, and if we were unable to, then I think we have a very dedicated and interested local citizen who would do their best to fill that position. But I think to do the job right, we should really try one more time, because I think we can cast a wider net. So that would be my take on this right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
I would kind of concur with Councilman Councilman Landman. I think that at this point in time, with all the projects coming up that we have, it would be best to try to see if we can get a energy solar person in there for that at-large. And that's my opinion on that.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, while I would agree with that, I would also, at a future point, like us to take another look at the makeup of this board. I think it makes it hard because there's six, and we have requirements for majorities, and that makes it hard, and, you know, I think it is a ground area for people that want to get involved to be involved, and and I would like to see maybe we add another person, and maybe that other person is another at-large person, because we actually do need, you know, we do need the expertise, because these are, as was pointed out at the beginning because these are, as was pointed out at the beginning of the projects. But I would like to see that come back so that we kind of change the makeup of this a little bit.
All right. Vice Mayor Skelton?
I like that idea, actually, too, because it's, it's great when we can see people who want to get involved, and I think that's fantastic. And it would be great if we had an odd number of people on the, on the, in the board so that we can get a four-three if it's going to come that close or something like that. We don't want it to end up being a three-three vote, and then everything just gets tabled. So I do like that idea of adding an at-large position, especially since we have evidence of people who are clearly interested in getting involved in that. So I, I do like that idea as well. And as we said, with all of the projects coming up, it is going to be important to have somebody have that discipline-specific aspect to it. And I actually thought of somebody, that's why I was talking with Mr. Landman, so I will, I will mention it after the meeting.
Okay. And I have a question for staff. What would it take to go and amend the existing policy of the makeup of this board? Would it take like a staff report, a reading, an adoption of resolution, a second reading? So like a, three meetings?
It would be, it would be an ordinance, so we would, we would introduce it, and then it would be adopted. It would, it wouldn't be a lot of work.
Yeah, because I had written down the same thing that Councilmember Harvey said. I think it's probably time to look at the makeup. I think we're kind of boxing ourselves in. It makes it kind of difficult in this particular case. And I think if we added, if we simply added another at-large position and made it the requirement that it be a resident, I think that would really probably help this process out a lot more. So I would ask if the council is in favor of staff bringing back an adopted resolution in the very near future, and at least following those guidelines. If I'm, am I hearing that as far as another at-large?
Well, I certainly agree that we might want to look at the composition of the Design Review Commission, but I don't, why wouldn't we just take away an at-large and have it a five-member board versus...
Well, that's another option.
Right. Because in light of sometimes our difficult, difficulty recruiting, it might be easier and then, and then talk about the residency requirements.
Sure, sure. Councilmember Landman?
Through the chair, just to add one more wrinkle, because there's another good wrinkle, and you're right, there's another, both directions have their good points. In five years, I don't think I've ever seen a strong three-three. I've seen some times where there's been some discussion, and then, and I've seen occasionally one, maybe two dissenting votes, occasionally one dissenting vote, but for the most part, it usually resolves. So having said that, number one, it may not be an issue for us. Number two, two things. I guess I'd ask, what if we did get a situation like that, what would happen there? In essence, would that not bump up to planning then with that report that there was essentially a, a lack of clear direction, that there was essentially split? Would that be a huge problem and tend to stop anything from moving forward?
It wouldn't stop anything from making, from moving forward, because essentially what we, we liked to have a clear recommendation to the Planning Commission, but we often, in the staff report, just characterize the discussion and the important points to consider. We could look at the makeup, we could take a little more time and look at the makeup of it, of resident versus non-resident, and see if there's a better combination that way. So we could put it on our project list, our work list, to look at the makeup without the specifics of what it is, and see if there's a way we can get the disciplines represented that we feel we need, and still make sure that the community values are held.
Yeah, because I just want to say, as someone who's been watching, I'm, I'm not convinced that the model's broken. I'm always open to talking about it, but I'm still not convinced that there's an issue there that really perhaps truly needs, because if we look at it, remember, we go from six to seven, that's one more person. There's more deliberation, it takes longer without necessarily adding more information, helpful information at least for sure, to the decision in the long term. So just wanted to toss that out there.
Well, I think at this point, why don't we, I've already asked staff to bring back, you know, an amendment to the resolution, something new to look at with, if there's multiple options, you've heard a couple of ideas here, bring those, and then that'll come back for the council for a discussion and an adoption and moving it forward. Yeah, I think, I think all these ideas are all valid. I don't think there's one better than another. I just think we need to have a discussion on it, so. Do you want to suggest something? Okay. So, all right, so now we're back to me.
To you.
Yes, and we have Lars Langberg as an architect wanting to be reappointed. We have one member at-large, that's Eris Weaver, who wants to be reappointed. And we have a new potential member with Cynthia George, who would like to be appointed. And it sounds like we're all, I think I saw nods and heard comments from everybody, I was taking notes, on the energy solar position that we would try to continue to recruit, and let's see if we can find somebody. Maybe through Sonoma Clean Power, we might know of somebody in Kattati, if you could sort of talk to people in that group.
Yeah, we have a good call.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. So what I'd like to nominate, who I'd like to nominate would be Lars Langberg for the non-resident and architect position to be reappointed, Eris Weaver to be reappointed, since she has expressed interest, and then to continue to recruit for the energy and solar position.
Through the chair, I'd like to move approval of the mayor's nominations.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item? Nope, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Please show that's a 5-0 vote. And Ms. George really did appreciate what you had to say, honestly. And I am more than available, if you ever want to sit down and talk about other city-related functions and things that could happen, and even things outside the city. I know the vice mayor mentioned something about the Rona Park Kattati Library, so there's a lot of other options. And keep in mind that we may be including another member at-large in the next couple of months as well. So thank you very much for that, appreciate it. Okay, we will now move to item eight, which is engineering and traffic study. And we'll turn to our engineering public works slash assistant city manager slash acting city manager, Damian Obed.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. So the purpose of an engineering and traffic survey is to establish a radar enforceable speed limit. And the California Vehicle Code also allows for the local establishment of what's called intermediate speed limits. So the vehicle code lists specific situations where there's sort of a default speed limit that doesn't need to be posted, and there's a table in the staff report that lists those and where they apply. They generally like areas like residential neighborhoods and things where you have narrow streets, and there's an implied speed limit that's codified in the vehicle code. The engineering and traffic study in this item reviewed several roadways in Kattati, including Commerce Boulevard, East Kattati Avenue, Old Redwood Highway, Redwood Drive, West Sierra Avenue, and Valparaiso Avenue. And the way it works basically is that they track a variety of different criteria, as well as evaluate the segments of road that they're doing the survey on. And one of the key criteria is the 85th percentile speed, which is known by traffic engineers as the critical speed. And this, basically, it's the speed at which 85% of the drivers are traveling at or less. So there's 15% that could be over, but it's, in terms of traffic engineering, it's a general principle that 85% of the people will be traveling at what is a speed that is reasonable in the absence of any speed signs or other controls. Of course, you always have some exceptions, that's the 15%, but the vast majority travel at 85% or less, and the vehicle code has considered that and codified that as the method to use when establishing speed limits that you want to be radar enforceable. There's also a, in addition to the 85th percentile speed, there's also the ability to modify the speed based on other factors. So if there's a lot of driveways, or there's, you know, particularly, if there's particular hazards that may not be apparent to a driver, it enables, it enables the traffic engineer through the survey to lower it from five, five miles an hour down from the nearest five mile an hour increment that the 85th percentile indicated. A while ago, the city council had discussed a earlier draft of this study, and out of that discussion, there was two primary issues that had come up, and then, you know, subsequently, we, the staff have gone back and looked at it again. And one was Valparaiso Avenue, and the initial study was handled as a single road segment. A concern that was brought up the last time was that there really, the roads really do have two different characters. There is sort of a rural segment roughly between Lund Hill and West Sierra, and then a more sort of urban road segment between Lund Hill and Old Redwood Highway that has developed curb gutter and sidewalk, and then the other portion is more rural with just, you know, dirt shoulders and that sort of, that sort of look and feel. And then the other concern was about the, there was a proposed increase in the speed limit on West Sierra Avenue, which was a concern. So on the, on the first, on the first question on Valparaiso, staff went back, and the vehicle code does create an allowance where you can create segments, study segments, that make logical sense to a driver. In other words, there's an apparent change in condition that would make sense, so you don't set up a speed trap. And in the case of Valparaiso, the traffic engineer that did the study concurred that using Lund Hill as a breakpoint would make sense and would be apparent to a driver without it being, under the vehicle code, a speed trap. So there was a second survey that was done of that segment of roadway between West Sierra and Lund Hill, and then the other segment between Lund Hill and Old Red. Regarding the speed limit on West Sierra Avenue, there, the only mitigating factor that, that is allowable under the vehicle code is there is a preschool in the segment between East School and the hub, and there is the possibility to create with some signage and striping a school zone, which is a 25 mile an hour zone by code. And then if you look on the roadway segments on page three or four of the staff report, it shows the different segments that were surveyed, and it has the currently posted speed limits, and then the recommended speed limits. All the currently posted speed, all the currently posted speed limits are recommended to stay the same, except for the ones that are bolded in the recommended column. And so the first one there is East Kattati Avenue, and that's 500 feet west of La Salle to the city limits. So that's basically from the Laguna Creek Crossing, the pedestrian crossing there, to the city limits past the railroad tracks. It's currently posted at 30, and the recommendation from the survey was it be 35. Old Redwood Highway from Highway 116 to East Kattati Avenue, currently it's 30 miles an hour for the segment from 116 to roughly George, and then there's a 25 mile an hour zone right around the park. It was recommended that that be posted at 30 for radar enforcement. West Sierra Avenue from the city limits to East School Street, which of course is right here outside the door, it's currently posted at 25, and based on the 85th percentile speeds and adjusted down five miles an hour. The lowest that would be considered radar enforceable under the vehicle code would be 30 miles an hour. It would be a change in the speed limit there. And then West Sierra Avenue from East School to Old Redwood Highway, again, it's the same situation where it's currently posted at 25, but the speed survey with the downwarded five mile an hour adjustment allows you to go to 30. And then I'll add the caveat, as I mentioned earlier, you could also set up a school zone in that particular segment of roadway to lower that from 30 to 25. And then Valparaiso Avenue, again, this is, originally this was one segment, now it's two, so West Sierra Avenue from, Valparaiso Avenue from West Sierra to Lund Hill is currently posted at 25. It would remain, is, remain at 25 with the added study segment. The segment on Valparaiso Avenue between Lund Hill and Old Redwood Highway is currently posted at 25, and the, the vehicle code requirement for radar enforcement would be 30, as shown in the table. And lastly, I will also add that, as you know, with, with Measure G, we have added another police officer, and the police department has recently added, and they will add as the first of the year, a motor, a motor unit to do speed enforcement. And that, as Councilmember Landman mentioned earlier in the meeting, that, you know, I'm sure everyone hears, that's one of the primary concerns of residents is speeding in their streets. And the, the addition of the motor officer that can do, that will be their full-time job, is to do traffic control. And in addition to that, we also certified all our officers for the radar gun, so everyone, they're all eligible, so the police department is, is ready to go to enforce speed limits, basically, as we get into the new year, and they'll be geared up for it. And also, I will also add that, as a result of a grant a couple of years ago, the police department also did get a radar trailer, which are those portable trailers that they can deploy around town, and you've probably seen it in locations around town, which is another tool that we have at our disposal to try to control speeds. And the last thing I'll just add is that there is a draft ordinance included in this council item. The recommended action is not to introduce the ordinance or act on it in any way. At this meeting, it's really to discuss the updated traffic study and then provide direction on if, if the council feels it's ready to bring back at a future council meeting, it would be the first council meeting in January, to introduce an ordinance to implement the speed limits. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much for that report. And I will say, since I think I was probably the loudest voice about Valparaiso, and I did see it as a change in character, I think that's what I had talked about, it's, you know, there's an area where there's maybe a sidewalk on one side of the street, or no sidewalk whatsoever on either side, to an area that's more urbanized, where you have sidewalks. I hate to say that's urbanized, but it's part of it. So I think it makes perfect sense to have the two different readings, and it, it kind of proved itself in a sense that, you know, the, the rural area didn't increase, whereas, you know, Lund Hill to Old Red, that made a little more sense. And again, 25 to 30 miles an hour, not a huge difference. I can't remember this, but I almost wanted to say that there was a stretch that was 35 miles an hour. And again, based on the readings, well, of course, my argument was, well, if the average speed is 33, and then you round it up to the next five, and it's 35, maybe if they're doing 33 and a 25, they should all be ticketed, and everybody would be doing 25. That was just kind of my thought process on that. So it's interesting to see how these came out, and, and I would, I would hope that the council would encourage a special school zone just out here in front of the nursery school. I think that's really kind of critical. And if it's signage and striping that's necessary, you know, I would say that, you know, we would want to do something like that. And I suppose, to me, you know, if it goes from, from East School, it should probably just go all the way down to Old Red. Why, why have that last little stretch where you're either coming to a stoplight, or you're just taking off from a stoplight if you're going westbound? There's really not a big difference there to gain any speed, so why not just leave that at 25? So I'd suggest it go all the way to Old Red, but I think that's what you were suggesting, I can't remember. So enough out of me. Any questions for council from, any questions for staff from council? Councilmember Landman?
I can just fire him out there. Whoever wants to answer, it's all good.
Yeah.
We're pretty easy here, Mr. Mayor. Just one general question. I noticed in here, and I appreciate the fact that the inspector or the engineers, they came out and did this traffic engineering survey, looked at a lot of ancillary concerns that might impact the speed, and I noticed in a few places, they said, because of this or that, we recommend, they dropped it down a little bit, which, and then with my experience living here, and I'm sure council sees it too, those were good areas for that to happen. One area where I didn't notice, and I'm just going to ask, is in general, East Kattati Avenue, in particular, the stretch from Old Red to 500 feet west of La Salle, but, but really also the other part of East Kattati, too, from old, you know, from Old Red, excuse me, West La Salle to the city limits. And actually, particularly there, closer to Oliver's in general. We have a lot of small residential streets on the north side, on the other side. And I do know from talking to people there, heard it, if I heard it once, I heard it truly almost a dozen times, the difficulty in pulling out and accessing their house, their neighborhood. Every time they leave, every time they go to work, every time they come home, go to shop at Oliver's, whatever they do, very difficult to get across. And obviously, there's no real simple traffic answer there, because we can't put in a stop sign at every single intersection. I, I have a sense, we're probably not going to... I have a sense we're probably not going to put in roundabouts, I think, that's what I'm hearing. So clearly, we're kind of limited. And obviously, the thing that makes it difficult is because traffic is single-mindedly usually going east and west. So I'm curious, there was no chance for them to assess that part there too?
They -- so I'll take it segment by segment. But they did look at the 85th percentile speed plus all the other mitigating factors. And that segment from Old Red to basically the Laguna pedestrian path across East Cotati, the 85th percentile speed, just the raw number, was 35 miles per hour in that segment. And they recommended a downward adjustment, as allowed by the vehicle code, to 30 miles an hour. But that's as far as they can go under the vehicle code and still allow radar enforcement. I think, really, a lot of times, people don't pay too much attention to speed signs, but they definitely pay attention to people getting speeding tickets. That catches their attention.
I would certainly agree with that.
So even, I think even if there is a change in the speed limit, I don't know that it's -- the reason why people speed is because it just, for whatever, for the reasons that we all know, it feels open and it feels like they can speed even if they really shouldn't be. And a speed limit sign probably won't make as much difference as someone getting pulled over on a consistent basis.
And I would certainly agree. I mean, in general, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. We all shared, I think, some of the same concerns about this. And I think we're better off. We may have this one day when we checked, there may have been people going closer to 35, but having spent some time recently walking up and down that stretch, most of the time, people are traveling faster. So I think even if, for example, in this case, the current posted speed goes from 30 to 35, I bet usually most everybody's traveling faster than that. And if we gain the ability to actually control, take it whatever the appropriate, actually have legal control over that, and we do keep the speed closer to 35, I think there's probably a net gain. So in general, I appreciate the effort that's gone into this. I'm glad to hear that that was part of the consideration too. Appreciate that.
Yeah. And I should clarify that that first segment of East Cotati, it isn't recommending a change in speed. It's the next segment, Laguna Path to City Limits. And it was the same situation, as you mentioned, those residential streets that come in. The 85th percentile speed there was 38 miles an hour and it was rounded down to 35.
Yeah, that's my sense. I think they're driving 38, really closer to 40. So it would be ideal perhaps for some of the people, and perhaps a minority of people, maybe that live in those neighborhoods, to have it closer to that. But if at least we can get 35 and keep it there, everybody benefits. So it sounds good.
Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions for staff?
No questions. I was just going to indicate though, in second, your idea about making the school zone on West Sierra Avenue, just because I know also there's a crosswalk there. So there's a lot of issues. So I think it'd be great to have that be designated as school zone. But that was the only point I wanted to make at this point. Thank you.
Okay, great. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I was disturbed by this a couple of years ago when we saw it. And I'm not any less disturbed now, in particular on West Sierra, because I feel that we are rewarding people who drive too fast. Just because they're driving, 85% of them are driving too fast, doesn't make it right. We not only have one crosswalk, as Vice Mayor Skilman pointed out, there are actually three on West Sierra. And no one stops for anyone, period, end of story. And I have stood there for a very long time at all of those intersections. And quite frankly, I think we should take them away if people aren't going to stop, period. I like the idea of the school, that helps. But quite frankly, at 35 miles per hour, which is what they're going, and we're going to put it down to 30, at what point, my -- a question is, at what point do we ticket people? Do we ticket people when they're going 10 miles over the posted speed limit? Do we get them right at 31 miles per hour? I just, it's too fast. And we have three crosswalks there. And I just, I don't know how else to say it. There's no stop signs. There's nothing stopping anyone there. So I understand that it's a California vehicle code. And I understand that we cannot reduce it based upon that. But I don't have to like it and I don't believe that it's safe. And it's unfortunate that we're kind of pushed into this because we push bicycle and pedestrian safety, but we're kind of, our hands are tied based upon how people think they should drive on the street. So I'm just, I'm very frustrated.
Councilmember Moore, any questions or comments for staff?
I too had some issues with the speeds. And one of the things I did have a question on, if you look at the study that was done on East Cotati Avenue, from 500 feet west of La Salle. The study was done -- the study was done on a Thursday afternoon at 1:25 PM to 2:00 PM, if that's correct, if I'm reading that correct?
Are you looking at the data sheet?
I'm looking at the data sheet on the cumulative speed profile.
Right, on the second page, on the backside?
Right, on the backside of the engineering and traffic survey. East Cotati Avenue, 500 feet from La Salle to Cotati City Limits, east. And then you look back, and then it says data collected June 9, 2011, from 1:25 to 2:00 PM on a Thursday. Typically, I would imagine on June 9, on a Thursday, at those particular hours, there was a comment that was made talking about if it's a little bit more open, you're going to get a little heavier speed. Because if nobody's around, they have a tendency to have a higher rate of speed there versus when it's more congested. So isn't something like that going to skew that 85th percentile?
Well, the time and date of the locations are usually left up to the judgment of the traffic engineer that does the study. They're supposed to use good judgment, try to get a representative period of time to do it. I don't know that the volume at that particular hour has -- I don't know if there's enough volume on that street to affect the free flow speed significantly. But I, again, I couldn't speak to that specifically.
Having lived off of that street for the last 30 years, or close to, there are significant differences in the volume of traffic throughout the course of the year, of course, with commuting and school and work and things like that. School period versus summertime, which the university is right down the street. So I have some questions on that study. And then the other question that comes to mind is, when we look at, under the California vehicle codes and the recommendations of if the traffic is flowing in the 85th percentile, that we should round up or down to the next five mile per hour increment. If we don't round it up in a particular instance, like in this particular area, or maybe on West Sierra Avenue, what are the ramifications?
Well, so using the specific segment that you are talking about, East Cotati, from the pedestrian crossing to the city limits, that one came out at 38 miles per hour. And so that would, by code, round, it would round up to the nearest five, so it would round to 40. And then you can take a five mile an hour deduct if there's other considerations, which was the case here. If it was, you know, if it was, if it had come out to be, say, 36, you could round that down to 35 and then take a five mile an hour deduct from that. That's just, and this is how the code works.
Well, and I think there's some other factors too that aren't taken into consideration regarding the vehicle code. And then you've got, I guess, traffic safety. But you certainly don't have any factors that I saw that were talking about environmental impacts. Because if you have, you're going from 30 miles an hour from Old Red to the creek crossing there, and then all of a sudden, you gas it to 35 miles an hour, which you know that they're going faster, and then you have a stop sign. And then you go up to the next light at Adrian, and then you go to the next light, the potential next light at the railroad crossing. Those are some of the things I don't think really don't come into this. So maybe those are some mitigating factors that would allow for a more conservative approach?
So what they normally look at is, they look at the configuration of the road, the width of the road, if there's bike lanes or no bike lanes, the visibility of the road. They look at volume, just the vehicle overall ADT, the total volume in the day. They look at the number of collisions that have happened there. Those are the sort of things they look at to determine if there's other factors that would allow a five mile an hour.
But no, they don't look at near misses because they don't have that data.
Nobody tracks that statistic.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it has to be a trackable statistic.
Yeah, I've seen a few of those.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, for better or for worse, that's just how they do it.
Well, but there was a question that you asked. I don't know if it got answered yet. What are the ramifications if you don't go by the state formula?
Right.
And I'm guessing, I don't know, but I'm guessing you wouldn't be able to do enforcement there. Is that true?
That is, that's accurate.
So to me, that puts more lives in jeopardy.
Well, if we're really saying that the 85th percentile is well above the speed limit, it begs the question, how much enforcement are we doing there? I mean, I don't know.
Because we don't have the traffic study, we can't do the enforcement until we have a traffic study, then we can do the enforcement, right? It's kind of a chicken and egg thing here.
It's exactly right. And it should be pointed out, this is our second time around with this. Because as you remember, the first time, we had exactly these concerns. And that's why another effort was made, just to try and get that down. But the bottom line of this frustration is, we're bound by law, California vehicle code. There's not a lot of options. If you want to be able to do radar enforcement, you have to do that. And if we don't, beyond like the mayor just pointed out, which was good, because I thought we'd missed that, that without it, we don't have the ability to do radar enforcement. And without it, if we leap the status quo, what happens? Those things continue to creep up, I think.
But if you look at, coming back and readdressing this particular concern, there were changes that were made or suggested, like on Valparaiso. So we're not just beating a dead horse. I mean, we're looking at something and we are making changes to what the initial suggestions were. So with that in mind, is there the ability to offer other mitigating factors to an area like East Cotati Avenue, i.e., as an example, environmental concerns?
So the question would be, what would be the likelihood if we took a third pass at this with a traffic engineer, that we might be able to get a shave of five miles an hour here or there in some of those busy streets? Would that be, is that what your?
It could be. Could be a potential. I mean, it's like, you know, Councilmember Harvey said, some of these I'm not real comfortable. Certainly, I think the compromise or the readjustment on Valparaiso, I'm comfortable with, that type of thing. But, you know.
Well, you know, perhaps.
I mean, maybe just a specific area we might look at.
I don't think we did, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, last time, this issue did come up on East Cotati. And we had a, we, being the city staff and the traffic engineer, discussed each one of these areas where the speed limit increases and there were some concerns expressed last time. And the response I got at the time is, there was really nothing in that segment that would allow us to further reduce it. Your specific question about the time of day that the survey happened, of course, I'd be happy to ask those questions and revisit that with them. So perhaps I could come back with a proposed ordinance to introduce and address some of the specific questions on that segment and come back with maybe more answers from the traffic engineer than I have tonight.
I don't know if the council feels that I'm beating a dead horse here, but I'm trying to prevent a dead horse on this road because it's horrendous.
Well, yeah, and I don't disagree and I applaud you for your concern for all residents, Cotati or non-Cotati, along East Cotati Avenue. However, I guess my argument to that would be, East Cotati Avenue versus any other road, well, even with the exception of Old Red, I think East Cotati Avenue has the longest line of sight distance on it. In other words, you know, the need for speed by a driver, when they have that line of sight and they can see for a longer period of time, regardless of the fact that they may be distracted with a million things that are going on in their lives and in their gadgets in their vehicle, I think part of the problem with East Cotati Ave is that it's got a great line of sight. You can see a long, straight line after you pass the pedestrian crossing going eastbound, I mean, darn near to Sonoma State, darn near, right? And I think that when people have a straight shot of a road like that, they naturally increase their speeds. Don't tell me any one of us has ever been driving and all of a sudden go, ooh, I didn't realize I was going that fast. I think we've all done it at some point. If you say no, then okay, that's great, you're a better person than I am. But I know I've certainly done that. And it's just, it's a matter of focus. And to me, I think the best incentive for a driver to slow them down is when that red and blue light's flashing in the back and somebody says, press hard, three copies, you're doing seven miles an hour over the speed limit. Sorry, don't do that again. I think, personally, I think that's a really great tool that could be used by the police department. And I think that's probably one of the best tools if you really want to get people to drive better. And I've brought up numerous times now, every morning when I go to work and I'm making a southbound turn on Old Red off of Myrtle, that there's a guy, or a woman, there's a vehicle driver going through a red light, kid you not, three out of five days a week. Now, I think when we all went to driving school, and I think it's still true, that the red light means you will stop. It doesn't tell you how fast you should go or how slow you should go. It says you will stop. And these are people that are hitting the crosswalk on the Lee side when it's red, not hitting that crosswalk on the other side of the intersection when it's red. They're hitting it there. That means they saw yellow way before or they weren't paying attention. So we're going to chase our tail until kingdom come if we try to figure out what's the, you know, the slowest speed. How do we discourage? I think the bottom line is, how do we discourage people from speeding and being distracted drivers? To me, that's the more critical thing that we're trying to address here. This is a tool. It's a tool.
Through the chair, if I might.
Yeah, I know, you had your hand up first, then I'll go to Sue.
Well, first of all, I'm enjoying the, what was it, beating the dead horse and chasing our tails. I think we're getting good analogies tonight. And that always makes the discussion better for all of us, a little more lively, so that's great. But just two quick data points before we get off, have public comment and go to discussion. To the point, I agree with your concerns. This is the same, the same reason this got kicked back to come back again. Improved, perhaps not as much as we'd like, but it's improved perhaps as much as possible. Remember this, we're concerned about, East Cotati is the perfect example because it is by its nature going to be a problematic street because of its configuration, the way it's laid out and the speeding that occurs. We're concerned because it's going from listed 30 to 35, but the reality, people are driving darn near 40 there. They're driving 38. And that's, I'm personally convinced, if you get rush hour timing, it'll be worse. They're going to be driving 40. You might up what they think is the average speed there because people drive even quicker, I think, en masse. That's what it seems like. So remember, right now, they're driving 40 and we really don't have the ability truly for radar enforcement with that. With this process, you wind up with being able to enforce 35. And I think the key last point I wanted to make is, that does give us a net reduction in speeding. I mean, this is the second time around, there's no better way to do it. If we could go right back to planning that street and rethinking some of the choices in the past about how it's laid out, how it's all configured, we could probably do a lot better. But what we got here tonight, it's not ideal, but I don't want to let perfect be the enemy of good here. And I do think we have that. Just a thought.
Can I ask a staff question if I could? Are these surveys required on a cycle? Or are they as cities deem necessary?
They, depending on, so there is a cycle for it. They do get stale at some point. So if they, normally, the typical timeframe is about seven years with, you know, certified radar operators. I think it can be extended maybe to 10. But that's the outside, absolute outside limit of how long they're valid.
And so let's just say in five or And so, let's just say in five or seven years, we decide to do this study over again, either all of the same locations, or just a few of them or something, and what if through that process, the numbers pan out that the speed can be dropped five miles per hour in a certain segment? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, we'd be having the same discussion, but in reverse.
Great, thank you. Stop right there. So that's just something to keep in mind. Now we're going to get public comment. Do you have something you want to add before the public comment?
Well, I didn't get my question answered.
Okay.
And you were, my first question was, when do we ticket? And I didn't get an answer to that. Is it, if it's 25, is it at 26, or is it at 36?
Good question. So generally, it's five over is a rule of thumb, because some people by mistake can go, you know, two, three, four over. I would like to just inform council that, you know, in the strategic planning, speeding did come up, and I was a part of Major G, you know, campaign, and, and it came up during that point, too. So the police department is well aware of that. So since then, every officer, including the sergeants and even the designated Level One Reserve officers, are all now radar trained, and we have increased our issuance of tickets. It has increased. I cannot give officers a quota, it's not legal, but they have increased, and I will share with the department that it's, it's obviously a council priority, and we will keep writing citations. And as Damian pointed out, too, the motor's coming back, and that's going to make a significant impact as well. And having said that, you know, I, I recommend that we adopt the speed limits where we can radar enforce, because that's the only way we can write a citation. Because the higher patrol, they could follow people on the freeway, because there's no stop signs, and it's wide open, and they can have their speedometers calibrated to write citations that way. It just doesn't work for us in our city. I think that additional light at Santera will help the issue also on East Cotati. So, thank you.
Okay. Did, was there more than that one?
Not a question. I mean, I'm with you. I'm hoping that this is a first cut at it. The problem is, as was pointed out, we don't have this traffic study, so we don't have a baseline. We can't start. So even though I don't like these, I mean, I really don't like some of these, without that baseline to start, it's hard to get this traffic behavior changed. And I agree with you, we can't change that behavior until we start ticketing people. So while, you know, I have to swallow some of these that I don't like, and I wish people's behavior was different, you know, we've got to have a baseline. And I think that we do need to set a schedule where we, you know, review that as the behavior change, and the 85th percentile is a better indicator of the way people should be on some of these streets.
One more question, if I can get indulged from the chief. Would there be a way to do like an annual report from the police department on statistically broken down speeding tickets on different segments of roads? Not different segments, but different roads in the city. Do you guys have that level of detail?
No, but it sounds like a good job for the new motor officer.
I kind of like that. It's just, it's, it might be interesting to find out, you know, maybe where are the hot, hot spots? I don't know, might be interesting. We probably all have a lot of built-in biases of where those could be, but it'd be nice to have some statistics on that that we could use in the future, just something to think about.
Good idea.
We have talked long enough.
I have one more quick question.
Outside of one more quick question from council member Moore.
Right now, you're saying that we cannot radar enforce East Cotati Avenue. Is that right?
We can at the old speed limit right now, because the survey has been extended. So right now, we are doing enforcement, but it's going to, eventually, it's going to expire, and we won't be able to.
Yeah, I'll add to that, that we're right at the, we've, we had the original five-year window, and then the extension, and like kind of the over, the second extension, so we're right on the cusp of moving out of that window where the tickets would be, would be valid in court.
Okay, thank you.
We will now open this up for public comment, if anybody would like to. I have no cards, but anybody who's willing to talk, Mr. Kirkman, come on up.
This opens up many years of frustration. There are certain realities. If you go down Valparaiso, it's a windy road, to use your term, you don't have a line of sight. People tend to go reasonably slow till about Lund Hill, when it opens up, gets wide, and seems like a go-ahead. East Cotati used to be one lane, there used to be dirt on the side. City planner wasn't aware that sidewalks are on both sides of the street. Somebody who, friend of mine passed away, broke his shoulder because there was dirt and potholes. So there's a lot of history. When you open it up, I'm sorry, signals tend to mean kind of a clock down like a drag strip. Oh, green light, pedal down. So unfortunately, they don't always work. And as you addressed, red lights don't necessarily mean stop. Stop signs certainly don't. If you go on Charles Street, you just do a right at the eight ball, you gain speed and do a right at East Cotati. It's not really a problem, and it happens every day, with some people doing better than 40 miles an hour on Charles Street. So speed is an issue. There used to be stop signs at the end of Charles Street in East Cotati, and they were very effective because people stopped, and so that you didn't run into somebody, you stopped. For whatever reason, shortly after, or perhaps during Les Wosko's chieftain, the stops were removed, and there were countless excuses for why they could never return. A stop sign tends to slow traffic down a lot better than an island. People crashing through the existing island and running into it seemingly doesn't slow people down, they continue to hit better than 50 miles an hour at the area from the creek to Old Redwood Highway. Why? Because it's a long road, even though there's a big turn there, people accelerate all the way. People tend to want to go to a signal as fast as they possibly can, and then potentially stop at the red light. So there are problems with the existing situation. Widening the street doesn't work. Pairing it down into one lane or opening it up from one lane means go faster, there are two lanes, there's more options. So there are problems. I personally think the stop signs should be returned at the end of Charles Street, because it breaks up that section. It slows down traffic because you don't have an option. Certainly, increasing speed, coming off the freeway, people are going 70 miles an hour, suddenly going 25 doesn't work, so it's not realistic. Coming from Pine Lane, you're doing 35. You hit Cotati and you slow to 25, there has to be a little bit of a transition in reality. I see the yellow lights, so I'll mosey on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Beric.
Counsel, I've never heard so much baloney in my entire life. I mean, no, not my entire life. It's been a long time since I've heard the baloney that I've heard here tonight. I mean, this was torturous. I've sat through some torture, some tortured issues here on this council before, but this was ridiculous. The fact that anybody would make a baseless accusation that there are three crosswalks on West Sierra and nobody stops, nobody stops, period, end of story, is ridiculous. Drivers stop. Pedestrians cross the street safely. I stop. And anybody who says that we don't stop owes the community and myself an apology. The chief himself has, has said to me, has pulled me aside and said, hey, thanks for stopping for that pedestrian. People stop. Stop exaggerating. We love your passion. We love your concern for public safety, but come on, get off it. It was Rich Cullinan, when he was here on the council in the late, late 90s, he sat up here one night as mayor or councilman, and out of the blue, he said something like, I can't believe why people speed so much. They speed, they speed. Son, well, where are they all going? How, why are they going so fast? It's a great question, but he was smart enough to know that he did not know the answer. And you don't know the answer either. You can't look into their minds, you don't know what they're coming out of their driveway and what they're thinking and so forth. It's ridiculous. Just do your job. Take the staff's recommendation, it's, it's on point, and stop bov, bov, bovulating over all this crap. It's, it's, you know, what I hear, what I heard on the campaign trail is people want speed bumps. They don't understand why some neighborhoods have speed bumps and they can't. And they're right. It's easy, it's, it's cheap, it's a, it's a, it's a half, it's a, it's a compromise, and a lot of people want speed bumps. And the fact is, you know, one of you mentioned something about striping. Striping is a great tool to use. You're not, you're not striping nothing. You could easily stripe a lot of these streets, slow, 25, 30, stripe it. Striping's cheap, you won't do it. Many of the speed limit signs are dirty. They haven't been cleaned in years. Go look at some of them. People want speed bumps, they want traffic enforcement, they don't want higher taxes, you know? You guys just need to come back to some common sense here, trying to look into the minds of all these drivers and, and try to anticipate what they're doing and why they're doing it. It's crazy talk. You know, your job's not easy. It's not easy, but just use some common sense. Staff reports on the money, you got to do what you got to do here.
Thank you so much for those comments. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Ms. Alderman?
I wanted to give a little bit of the history of speeding in Cotati, and how, when I was a teenager, Cotati was known for traffic tickets at any time. And my classmates, I'm class of 81, ran to Cotati, even now on Facebook, they think you, you go through Cotati, you slow down. And that's how it was, because it was enforced so, so much. And we would, as teenagers, I had a slightly wilder, older brother, and he, we would get into the Cotati city limits, and we'd slow down, because we knew that we would be pulled over. And so I do think there needs to be more enforcement, because it got sort of also known around town, that the police department was underfunded, they weren't doing tickets, so people speeded up. So I think that's part of the history, too. But it was very effective to have the enforcement way back when. This is late 70s, so, early 80s. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, counsel. Thank you for the spirited discussion on this. I certainly have found myself, even with improvements that are going on, in walking from where I live across East Cotati Avenue at Arthur Street and Charles Street there, that accidents have happened. And so, you know, some of the signs that we're doing, they still need improving. In particular, the other day, walking to the mayor's talk in Redwood Cafe, and there's a truck comes around, and it's barreling down the road, and it barely stops, almost running into, to the next car that had stopped. So I agree with everybody that we do definitely have, you know, a safety issue that's, that's out there. How we can go about it, I think, requires some long-term imagination. We do have a pedestrian and bicycle plan, which I hope will be actually released one of these days, that we can, we can start at doing more implementing on. The, I'm surprised that the new traffic lights at Santera Way haven't been mentioned. Maybe we're just looking at what the traffic study says, but I would ask the question, is that going to influence anything? Since the last discussion here, those traffic lights have gone up, but they're obviously not on yet. They are at that point where you're accelerating, and you're, for some reason, accelerating into the horizon seems to be what people do. I don't know whether it's really going to slow people down a lot of the time, because there is that green versus red, can I get the green? But, you know, it's, it's definitely a challenge for Cotati, so I hope we'll keep on with some, coming up with creative solutions to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, we'll close it and bring it back to council. Any further discussion on this?
I, through the chair, I'd be happy to say, I don't mind being accused of peddling baloney or any other sort of lunch meat, frankly. I like lunch meat, but I would point out, there's no need to yell. We can hear pretty well through this thing. For, you may not be able to tell from the audience, but the loudspeaker system is working fine. So nevertheless, I do appreciate the passion. I want to appreciate the history that Lori brought out, too, because that's interesting. That's a little before my time, and I think it does point out the key concern. I think we see that enforcement works. The idea isn't to hire an accident officer, the idea isn't to get revenue from tickets, that's not the goal whatsoever, and I wouldn't be supportive, and I don't think my colleagues would if that was the goal. The goal is to hopefully make the town safer and more comfortable for everybody, whether it's the big streets that we spend a lot of time wearing out, but also neighborhoods like all of yours and the one we share. And I do think that was helpful, at least for me, in pointing out that, yeah, that is what makes the difference. It really does work, and I think it does stick once you do it consistently for a few years. It really gets in there, so that's helpful. And in terms of East Cotati, I hear the comments, it's a difficult place, the construction of that street. And I think Mr. Hancock actually answered Mr. Kirchman's question, because the problem, I think with the stop signs, I remember discussing this, when we were talking about the new lights that are installed there now, the issue with the stop sign is people coming around the corner. Nobody expects a stop there, and that leads to problems. It's one of those difficult places, that every solution has its good parts, but then every solution has its bad parts, too. So I hear the concerns. I don't know if we could do better, but I would like to see if there's ever a way to make it a little better. But at any rate, I think we've had the discussion. I'm comfortable supporting this. I think there's some parts that I don't like. I, I hear what you're saying, and I'll say it just as strongly, but I do think taking that bad medicine with the good, we get more out of it than we lose. So that's where I'm at.
That's great for discussion.
So, yeah, sorry.
Is there anything beyond having any further discussion?
Nope. As somebody who works with people who break the law every day, I would definitely enthusiastically move to receive and file an updated engineering and traffic survey. And the direction, I think, we've amply discussed, I'd ask that we be reintroduced, the proposed ordinance in January of next year, adding Chapter 10.25 speed limits and amending Section 10.20.010 of Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic in the Cotati Municipal Code.
A motion and a second. Any last discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposition, any abstentions? Show that four votes in favor and one opposed, council member Moore opposed to the motion. Thank you for that, and we are now going to look at correspondence and pending legislation, and there is no action for this evening, is that correct?
That's correct.
With that, we are going to take about a seven-minute break, and we will come back in here in just seven minutes. Thank you. Okay, if we could bring our meeting back to order, we are now moving to item nine, which is the reorganization of the city council. And I'll just read a couple of things here. So, actually, I'm going to turn it over to the acting city manager, am I not? Yes, I am. That was easy.
Yeah, so on this item, we will start with opening it for any general public comment regarding the reorganization of city council.
Mr. Beric? That's supposed to be you saying that, not me, right?
It was that guy on the microphone, yeah.
Thank you. There are a few different ways you could handle this tonight. You could have had a brief discussion, made a couple nominations and so forth, and opened up the comment, but I appreciate the fact you opened up the, to public comment early on. I think that's fine. I would say, I've seen a lot of conduct on behalf of mayors past and council members past, and I would say, I've been rudely interrupted by council members violating the Brown Act on more than one occasion. I think one night, I used the word asinine, and I was interrupted by Mr. Deloso and, and Mr. Moore, kind of a little duet there. And the fact is, I've also seen Wendy Skillman.
And the fact is, I've also seen Wendy Skilman interrupt and, without cause, and I don't think Ms. Skilman is ready to be mayor. I would suggest that Susan Harvey has shown the most restraint and the most professionalism and her experience, and although we don't always agree, she has voted against the council on the public records retention matter that was before you a couple of weeks ago. That took a little leadership and took a little guts. She also voted against the budget, final budget, a couple of years back, and she had good cause for voting against that budget because the staff did not answer her questions appropriately. So I want to thank Mrs. Harvey for those times to stand tall and be independent. I would suggest that you nominate Susan Harvey for mayor tonight, and that you give Wendy Skilman a couple more, maybe another year or two, to read the law, the Brown Act, read your Kattati Code of Ethics, understand what it means because you signed on to them. That would, that would be a good start. Maybe try to learn Robert's Rules of Order, which this council is still supposed to be guided under, and you would probably make a fine mayor, but I just don't think you're ready yet. I would, I would ask you appoint Susan Harvey. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, closed public comments. The first item of business is election of the mayor for the calendar year 2015, and I'll start by calling for nominations for mayor.
I'd like to nominate Wendy Skilman, Vice Mayor Wendy Skilman for mayor.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a second? All right. Before we do a roll call vote, we will take this opportunity to open up for public comment one last time. Are there any, any additional comments?
Yes, Neil Hancock, I support that. I think that's an excellent choice, and it's been good to see Wendy getting into the council and really making a difference in Kattati. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we'll start the roll call.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Mayor Deloso?
Absolutely, yes.
That's unanimous for Wendy Skilman as mayor.
Congratulations, almost mayor, Skilman.
Pro temp.
Yeah. So the next item of business is election of a new vice mayor for calendar year 2015. So again, we'll start with a call for nominations for vice mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
Mayor's first.
I'd like to nominate John Moore as vice mayor.
And I will second that.
Thank you. Before we do a roll call, again, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Mayor Deloso?
Another absolutely yes.
That's unanimous for Vice Mayor John Moore for 2015.
All right, congratulations, almost Vice Mayor Moore. With that, I'll hand it back to the mayor. Thank you.
Wow, this almost stuff looks really interesting. So we will, congratulations both to Wendy and John, well deserved.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll expect quite a bit out of you both this next year, so be ready for it. We will now move on to Item 10. So council assignments as representatives and liaisons to various committees for the calendar year 2015. And the one thing I'd like to start with is to just warn Mayor Pro Temp, Skilman, you are on a number of committees, and there's a very large time commitment as mayor, so be very generous at saying, no, please, you can take over that position as people ask for that tonight. And I think one thing I'd like to add is that the calendar at the end of all these appointments, Tammy, I assume you probably put this calendar together, this is great, this shows all of the meetings, and I think as we go down to council reports at the end of each meeting this next year, it'll be good to look at that calendar and make sure folks are able to attend their meetings and report out on them. Did you have a comment on that?
I just want to point out, this is an Outlook calendar. I think that you can access that calendar. And also, please note that that is the generally scheduled meetings. It's not anticipated that we'll have the information to keep those current if there's a change, although as the representatives could always tell us if there's a general change, but for individual cancellations, for whatever reason, that calendar, I wouldn't rely on it for that. But generally speaking, it is available to give you an idea on your own devices for that.
And I think it behooves all of us to take a look at that calendar, and if you're the representative for that particular committee, make sure that those are accurate and get the information back to Tammy. That'd be great. Okay, so, oh, did I skip you doing the staff report on this? I didn't skip, I was leading up to.
There's not much of a staff report. It's the appointment for committee representatives for the calendar year 2015. Appointing at this time gives staff a chance to inform all these agencies of the new appointments and get everything set up for contacts and sending out agendas and notifications. And then there are, this is also the appropriate time to disband any ad hoc committees that are not needed, and that would be your decision. The, there's an up-to-date committee listing as well as a detailed listing of the commitments for each of those appointments. Then, just to point out too, and the staff report mentions this, that the Library JPA Committee has, is no longer exist, it served its purpose and has...
It's gone.
It's gone.
It's gone. Let me just...
So there's no need to make an appointment for that body. And that's it unless you have any questions.
Yes. So is the best thing to do is start with page one of the seven pages and just go through each of them real quickly? And whoever's the liaison, we can get those updated, and then that can all get transferred to that one page that's in the front of our council binders. Is that an okay way to do this?
Fine.
Okay, I guess we're doing it that way then. So there's two under ad hoc committees, city council protocol policy.
Let's get that done.
Yes, we've, we've got that. I think we were getting that actually from our outgoing city manager getting it emailed to all of us again, so.
Would that include housekeeping?
Potentially.
You couldn't even wait, huh? You had to jump right in with that one. That's great. You two fine with staying on that then?
Yes.
Because it sounds like maybe there's light at the end of the tunnel?
Hope so.
Okay, great. How about emergency services, Mark and Wendy?
You know, we actually, we talked about this last time around. We left it open, not because there was anything happening, we have not had a meeting in this year on this, but only because the state of emergency service throughout the county is certainly in flux, there's no question about that, and we thought it might be prudent to keep it a little bit long until some of this resolves a bit. So I think we're looking at the same choice. There's not a need for it right now, but it's the type of thing that could flare up potentially within this year very easily. So it's kind of the direction of the council, and what my colleague wants to do here...
Well, do you two, you two want to stay on it? Do you want to rotate off? Just start thinking about that, I'm warning you now.
Well, I would say the workload has not been terribly heavy for us.
That's good, that's good.
And we do have the background of at least assessing the problem, but it's, it's one of those things. It probably doesn't hurt to leave it one more year, see what happens, and if things resolve, then perhaps we can, what do you, what do you think about that?
And I'm okay sticking with that just because we've had discussions and we've had background, and so if anything does come up, we've already kind of, we'd be up to speed. So it wouldn't take a whole lot of building back up, so I'm okay hanging on to that one.
All right, good. As is, standing committee is A-BAG is the first one. Sue, you're our liaison.
Fine with that.
You're good with that?
It's two meetings a year. One is usually in the city and one is in Oakland.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Absolutely.
At least they know where I'm going now. A couple times the Oakland one, I got lost.
Mark, you're on as alternate. You want to stay on that?
Councilmember Harvey covers that very well. I have not had to go in several years. If somebody would like to take over as alternate, that's fine with me. If nobody wants to, and you ever do need the coverage, if I'm available, I'll do it. So it's open if anybody wants it, jump now, guys.
When are these meetings?
They are in the spring and in the fall, like April and October.
But like, a midday kind of...
Oh, yeah, they're, they're all morning. They usually go from like eight in the morning till two in the afternoon. It's a whole...
After the 260 hours of vacation time used for meetings this year on my part, I'm gonna say I'm fine without doing this. I would look you straight in the eye and say, you better be saying the same thing. I noticed our former city manager, her name was on there. Was there a reason there was two alternates?
You know, I think it might have just been that she would occasionally want to attend, or have the ability to attend.
Which, those are open public meetings anyway, are they not? Or are they?
Um, yeah, yeah.
I believe we might have also agreed that if, for some reason, I wasn't available, the city manager, having done this in the past, could fill in as an alternate and for, unlike many of the other ones, A-BAG was okay with that, I guess.
Do we want to continue that practice?
I would ask the two people involved, it works fine for me, I'll tell you that.
I mean, well, we don't have a new city manager, so.
Let's just, why don't we just take that off for now? We can always revisit and reappoint, okay? Kattati Oversight Board.
Yeah, we have those once in a while. Well, you know.
What are you overlooking?
Uh, the dissolution of our redevelopment.
Oh, how's that going for you? Have you brought it back?
No, not yet, but I, but I heard it might come back as a different name, but that's for another meeting.
All right.
So I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that? You don't need, we don't need an alternate?
No.
Okay.
We have a chair and a vice chair, and what's happened, I think there was like one meeting I missed, and the vice chair can chair it.
Okay. The two by two by two? You and I are on that one?
I would like to see this reinstated, in particular because of the stuff that we've had with the portrait of Sonoma County and education as part of that, so I really would like to see us kind of get a hold of Rona Park, and I know that, or the school district, sorry. I know Rona Park is very anxious to make sure that the portrait stuff happens, and I have another item for that, but I would really like to see those reinstituted. So I don't know how we go about getting someone to schedule one of those, but...
Well, we'd have to find out who the two Rona Park liaisons are from their council, because they may have changed it, I don't know.
And the other...
Actually, they had to have.
They may have, yeah. And the other thing, just to, so that kind of we're all on the same page, we're in the process of having the, the school board have the portrait presentation, including Kattati and Rona Park, so they kind of can see where kind of both of the communities are at.
Right. That was, I mean, we did have a couple of meetings early on, I remember, and they were quite good, just to get the communication lines open between the two cities and the school districts, so I'd like to stay on that too, unless somebody's got a burning desire to get on that. Nope. League of California Cities, that's assigned by meetings. Legislative liaison, I've yet to go to a meeting because Mark's attended every one of those, thank you so much.
Well, it's during the day too, so I'm probably, it's probably a good thing. My preference would be to stay on there right now. It's been interesting, I'm the vice chair right now, and our chair, Mr. Ploss, has indicated an interest after, what, seven, eight years he's been doing this? He's really done a heck of a job running it, perhaps stepping down for a term or two, so, so I'd like to keep my, my hand on this one for a while if it works.
There's some really good stuff that comes out of that group that comes to mayors and council members, and so it's great to have a Kattati person there all the time. And, I mean, I will be available if you ever have a need, just as long as I know ahead of time.
Well, we are talking too about perhaps a legislative field trip to work for the interests of cities, maybe two, but certainly one early in this coming year, and the thought was to perhaps bring alter, invite alternates too as well. So that may be coming up, so I'll give you a heads up on that, because that would be a good one.
Okay.
Hate to ask for more your vacation time, but that might be a decent one to take a look at.
Hey, it's all good, not to worry, not to worry. Library Commission, so we have an appointment there, and that is Hillary Smith, right? I'm writing that down as I'm thinking about it. There is no alternate, and I'm assuming they're still meeting monthly, but maybe we could check in with her. In fact, I may try to contact her and see if she can come and do a report. She should try to maybe come a couple times a year. She had even suggested that, you know, just do a report out to us of what's going on. So that would be good. JPA, a big fat X, there we go. That felt really good. I made two X's actually there. Marin, Sonoma mosquito abatement, Yvonne Van Dyke is our appointed position there that meets monthly, and because she left, she is still appointed, right? Okay, check. I guess we should, if some, somebody could contact her just to make sure. I don't think her appointment's up either.
No, we're, she has just recently been reappointed to extend her original two-year term to the full four-year.
Excellent.
So that's been handled and it's, it's been, it's done.
Great, perfect, thank you for being on top of that. Remith, so John and Damian, you guys are good with that for now?
Got a lot of stuff coming up.
Yep, okay. Russian River Watershed, Mark and Sue?
Mark usually goes to most of those.
Yeah, he's been a little quiet this year. I did, I do usually get there. I'm serving his chair right now. There's a possibility it'll continue for a year or two. It seems to go that way in this committee, unlike others that change with clockwork regularity, so I like it. It's a small committee, but we're doing some good work, and I've got a good background now on watershed issues, so I prefer to stay there if it works out that way.
You good with it?
I'm fine.
Yep, okay. Solar Sonoma County, John?
I'm certainly more than honored to stay on that one.
Are you a solar expert and live in Kattati?
I do.
We have a position for you on design review.
I've certainly got enough sunburn.
Okay.
You shouldn't have said yes to that, you just volunteered for the other one.
Excellent. So, I mean, I see it meets as needed. There's no need for an alternate on that one?
Never met.
No.
Haven't met yet.
Never met when I was on there either, so I think it's...
Is there a need for this committee?
I don't know that, honestly, I don't know there is a need for the committee. It's a, it was sort of a private group that was meeting for a while, you know, back when the, you know, the Climate Protection Committee was launching back in those days, and I haven't heard much from them in years now. I mean, I think they still exist in some form, but not in any sort of regular public meeting form, as far as I know.
We could be bold and take it off and then...
Always put it back if we need to.
If we, right?
Would you feel remiss if we deleted you, so to speak? No? No. It doesn't sound like it's meeting...
Since apparently I never got the nod anyway, so, I don't know. Did you sign the form?
Yeah, probably not. Okay, take that off. Sonoma Clean Power, Mark?
Oh, yeah, that's another one my alternate doesn't get to do too much because that's a good one. I'm busy on that.
I do read all the agenda items that come in though, I want you to know that.
I'll get you there, I'm gonna get you there one of these days.
Do read them.
I'm vice chair, a good chance of being chair next year, would love to have that opportunity.
Can you guarantee really low rates for everybody in Kattati?
That might be asking a bit much, but I think there's a good chance of it, doing a little bit better.
Let you out, no doubt.
I'm recording this meeting, just in case you're wondering.
So it's always worth looking at it, but yeah, I think it's a good thing.
Okay. I'm happy to stay on as alternate unless somebody has a burning desire? Nope. All right. Sonoma County Health Action, Sue?
I'm happy to stay on that, yeah. A little kind of, is now the time to bring it up, Damian?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good time now.
Okay. So along with the portrait of Sonoma County and looking at the different aspects, one of the aspects has to do with providers in the area, and the health department has scheduled a meeting, actually December 16th, to start looking at healthcare provider stuff within the Kattati-Rona Park area. And they are looking for representation at that meeting. They sent myself an invite as well as Rona Park's Health Action Representative, and as a matter of fact, I got a phone call from Gina today.
as a matter of fact, I got a phone call from Gina today. She was just like, apparently she's been working on some of the aspects with Rona Park for, for quite a bit. So there's regular health action, and then now it looks like there's going to be this little sub thing. So I don't know whether we want to have it as a separate item on here, or just include it as part of...
Is this going to be a, a long-term subcommittee?
Well, it's sort of hard to tell yet. Do, I mean, you talked to Dawn about it. It's hard to tell yet.
I think it's undefined, but the sense is that it's going to turn into a regular, and what regular means, I can't tell you yet. Probably will find out on the 16th, or it'll start evolving at that point. But there's that new community health clinic that's opening up next to Kaiser and Pedal, and Rona Park.
Right.
And the initial meeting's kind of about that, and about sort of being, I think, enhancing communication with all the different agencies that kind of, that work in this area, is Katati-Rona Park Greater Area.
And I did meet with that, the gentleman who was running that, I believe Pedro is his name. I met with him. That's...
Oscar, maybe, or Oscar?
Oscar?
Pedro was the one who was calling me. It was, the meeting was with Oscar. Yes, thank you.
Yes, Oscar.
Pedro's brother.
And Oscar is also on Health Action, too. And so he's kind of spearheading one of the, you know, kind of aspects of it.
Yeah. I mean, I thought, I, I thought, you know, the possibilities of helping out Katati residents, you know, is, could be really strong there, because there's a number of people that are already doing that service, but here this would be, they're going to Santa Rosa or Petaluma for it, and not right here in Rona Park. So, and yeah, they said they were going to be on the second floor of the Kaiser Building in Rona Park. That's what I'd heard, so.
Right. They apparently signed the lease.
So do we want to wait to see maybe what comes out of this other?
I kind of, number one, that's, that's fine, we can do that, but I was kind of asking for permission to go to this first meeting, to kind of see what it was about.
I would think that would be the real logical. If there's a direct connection clearly to Sonoma County Health Action, you've got the expertise in having done that, that certainly seems like a, a good direction.
I, I will add, too, that I think this, I mean, it sounds like what it is, is really just a, an evolution of Sonoma County Health Action in terms of just the implementation of some of it. So it's not really a different thing. It's just a, more like a implementation piece of it.
Mm-hmm. John, did you say you were okay with staying on it as an alternate?
Uh, sure.
Because if you're not, I'd be interested in taking that on.
Oh, um, well, I just, no, I don't mind. I just want to make sure that I am not circling an equitable amount of committee memberships.
I don't know yet.
We just deleted his...
But if you're interested in being alternate, by all means.
Um, yeah. I mean, I had some really good conversations with a couple of different folks about it. Yeah, Oscar, but Pedro as well. No, I did.
I didn't.
Just saying, I did. It was, anyway.
I don't know who he is.
John, I'm fine with that.
Yeah? All right. Why don't we put my name, just as the alternate on that one?
Well, not only that. If that develops into more, it may take, both of you.
Possibly, possibly. Now, I don't know, you can, I'll talk to you after this meeting about when that meeting is. I don't know that I have time to go to that, but you're going to go regardless.
I, yes. If I have permission, I will go.
You've got permission.
Okay.
Is it, like, within driving distance?
Within driving distance?
The meeting.
It's over Rona Park.
Yep. You've got permission. That's fine.
Thank you.
Anything beyond Sonoma County, I'd say no.
I could probably walk even.
All right. Let's move on. SCTA and Regional Climate Protection Authority?
This is an interesting one. Been on there for, as an alternate, for about four years. Been on there as the regular for about a year. And that's about the learning curve it takes. There's a lot of stuff, long meetings, but I'd like to stay there. There's some value in being able to be there and get a voice in for us. It was, I'd say, a significant part of our thrust for trying to resolve an issue in terms of the parking, the Caltrans parking space in downtown Katati. Being able to leverage the contacts and the staff we had there was really helpful to that effort. And I, and I think that's the type of thing we'll be able to continue to do with that, so.
Okay. And you're okay with staying on alternate? All right. Waste Management Agency. Thank you, Susan Harvey. Let's move on.
Um, we do need an alternate, and in particular, we need an alternate because I am not available at the next meeting. So we definitely need an alternate here.
Uh, wow. So when is that next meeting?
It is third Wednesday. And it goes usually from nine to probably noon. I mean, it is the 17th.
No. That would be the 17th of December.
Yes.
Yeah, that just...
Yeah. And it, and it lasts for a long time. It really does.
The meeting?
Yeah. Huh, Robin?
Fair warning.
I'm hitting the sense of destiny.
Any takers? Does it have to be a council member?
No.
No, I, I've actually, I've actually hung out in that meeting before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By choice?
It was way back. I mean, back, you know, I mean, I don't know, four years ago or something. But, yeah, I'm familiar with the group, and I work with them on some level, so.
Thank you once again for your service.
Then you two can be sworn in.
Oh, yeah, that, uh, that's right. I don't know.
Yeah, you have to be sworn in.
Right. You got to fill out the form, the Form 300.
700.
700? Sorry, 700.
3-7. So, Damian?
Damian.
Okay, good.
As alternate, yep.
I will talk to you after this meeting.
Yes, you will talk to him. Subregional Wastewater Policy Tech Advisory Committee.
There's not been a meeting?
No, I've, since, since at least 2008, there's been no meeting.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Should we get rid of this? Thank you very much.
I, I think, I think it, I mean, it technically exists on paper, but it doesn't, I, I think it'd be safe to eliminate it now, and if the need ever does arise, we can assign someone.
All right.
There's, if I have any power left in the position as mayor outgoing lame duck, I would say we're getting rid of that one tonight. If we need to add it again, we can do so. Water Advisory Committee.
Yes.
It's the, you know, garbage, water, sewer.
I know, yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. No, I like being on this.
And Mark, you all right with staying alternate?
And Mark does a great backup for me, if I'm not...
Well, I had some previous experience, so I can do that. But if any of my colleagues are interested in this one, it's an interesting one. At least to me, I thought water was pretty interesting. It's, the advisory committee, you're mostly advising. Every once in a while, you get a chance to help steer the wheel a little. So if somebody wants it, take it. Otherwise, if nobody does, I'm happy to fill in when you need me.
Yeah. The only issue for me is the meeting hours.
Yeah, same hour. It's, it's tough.
Yeah, that's the issue, the daytime meetings.
You're going to get the work for lunchtime, Sean.
Yeah.
For later, if you have a long meeting.
Now, if you're okay with it, I'm, I'm not overly inclined to want to jump on it.
Okay.
Well, keep in mind, things change with some of these initiatives. Be happy otherwise.
I think Mike, Mark's microphone is not working, but I think he said he's happy to stay on as alternate. All right. Let's go on to Water Bond Coalition.
And that's actually somewhat resolved, since we got Prop, or Prop 1, am I getting that right, passed? They've asked if we're interested in staying on board as far as implementing. And so I would be fine with that. It's, it's been fairly infrequent, the...
Since you're coming in as mayor, we're going to go ahead and spell your name right, though, if that's okay?
Well, that's okay. I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll put the M in for skill.
But no, I'm fine keeping that.
So, so it is going to continue?
Um, well, they've asked, I mean, I haven't responded yet, because I wasn't sure if I was going to be keeping it. So I can let them know that we're interested in staying on board for implementing it, and making sure that we can use some of that bond money here locally.
Okay. You're okay with alternates, so? Okay, great. So Mayors and Council Members Association appointments. We got Child Care Planning Council. Something different than garbage and water, so this is good.
I know, yeah, yeah.
Of course, you had the healthcare stuff, too, so. Do you need an alternate?
No.
And do we need to?
It was staying?
This is assigned by mayors and council members, so...
Oh, duh. That's right. I just said that, didn't I?
Did it, did it expire this last January, or does it, 2015?
Oh, it didn't.
Okay.
And I don't, no, it's for...
I'll, I'll confirm.
Yeah.
Make sure you have the right...
Okay.
So City Select Committee. I know I will be chairing that first committee, just to open it up and take a vote on who the new members are, and then I get to turn around and walk out, which is awesome. But please keep in mind whoever the chair would be, I guess, the mayor of Healdsburg, then this coming mayor of Healdsburg.
Sean.
It'll be Sean McCaffrey?
Yeah.
Okay. Then he knows, because he sat in on a couple of these, the pressure will be on him to have six-minute meetings like I produced. And I don't know that he can come through with that. And County Ag and Open Space, I don't believe my appointment's up. I think just Lori Galleon's might be up this year. Maybe not. Maybe nobody's. It's her and Wysocki and myself are the appointees on there. I love that committee. It was the one committee I wanted to get on, so I was very happy to get on that. So I will stay there. And Lee U California Cities, North Bay Executive Board?
Yeah, and that, that doesn't expire for a little bit either. I want to say 2016 or something like that.
That's relatively new, isn't it?
Yeah, I got re-upped. We just had a meeting. I'm just going to report on it. There you go.
Excellent. Waiting with bated breath. Sonoma County Board of Supervisor appointments. AB 939 Task Force, Linda, who is not here. AB 939, that's what got me started in Katati stuff, about 25, 30 years ago now. Wow. So can I assume that Linda, somebody's contacted? Okay, we're good. And Lafco, Mark, you're good with that?
Well, that one actually is up this year. I have completed a letter, just signed it today. So our colleagues throughout the county will decide if I get to stay there as a city representative, but we'll see what happens.
So you submitted to the Board of Supervisors?
I didn't, yeah. I believe it's a Board of Supervisors pick. It's going, it will go that way. So first, it has to go to an up or down vote, mayors and council members, though, and then it's ratified, usually, exactly, in my experience, as that vote goes.
Yep. All right. Finally, we are, I think this is the last part of it, right? Liaisons, yep. So Chamber of Commerce, we got John and Susan Harvey twice as alternate.
Yeah, I could just alternate once.
I like that. No, I think you should be there both times. John, you good with staying with that?
It's fun.
And Sue, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Community and Environment.
They are on hiatus.
It's currently on hiatus, so it's fine for me to keep that. If they come back from hiatus, hopefully, and it becomes overwhelming, then I'll have to farm it out, but...
We're okay with just leaving this on for now, this one?
Okay.
Okay. We'll leave it on for right now. Planning, Wendy?
That's fine.
Really?
Should I ask somebody else?
I just want to say that for 50 meetings on every Monday night this past year was a meeting with the city manager. Now, the next city manager may have different schedules, I get that, but those are 50 meetings right there and setting the agendas.
I will take your sage advice and pass the baton on to somebody else who would like to be the planning commissioner.
Excellent idea. Excellent idea. Is anybody interested in being liaison? I did it before, Wendy, I was the liaison.
I'm looking this way.
You know, I don't, I don't necessarily mind being liaison, although having a member, household member on planning.
I think it's a little awkward.
It is a little awkward.
And, and I'm, right now, I know that the city attorney is staring at me, because as the liaison, the council members really should never go to the podium and really comment on things, even though it was completely innocent. But anyway, I would think in your case...
So I would think with...
I would think in your case, it probably would be awkward.
Yeah, I would think with all the free time you're going to have now, it would be inappropriate for me.
[laughing]
Are you talking to Mark? Or Wendy? I'm sorry.
I think that ball got passed down the aisle here.
I'm happy to go back to planning commission and sit quietly.
I guess you are.
Read the minutes and just sit quietly. All right. I'll take that on again.
You didn't have anything to do on Monday nights now, and now you do.
No, no, absolutely not. Design Review, Mark, you want to stay on that?
I'd be happy to. If somebody wants it, I've had it for some years, and I've got more than enough to keep me busy. So if somebody wants it, it's fine with me. Otherwise, happy to do so.
Wendy, designer, 5:30, I could do that one.
4:30.
Yeah, I could do that one.
It's a good one. I think you'll like it. It's interesting to see the projects come in early.
Let's not speculate, everybody.
Yeah, so...
All right.
You'll see proposals, I guess, right? All right. And Library Advisory Board? How often are you guys meeting right now? Twice every other month?
It's quarterly.
Quarterly, oh.
At this point. So the challenge for me is getting there at 4 o'clock, working even in Santa Rosa. To get there by 4:00 is a little bit challenging. So if there's anybody else who would like to be on it, I mean, it's, it's really just kind of checking in, letting them know what's going on in town, and then reporting back here.
How has Rona Park's representation been? Is it AMI that's coming to meetings?
AMI's on there, on there as well. And then we've been having the, the library commissioner, which no longer, that position doesn't exist. But then the director's been coming to the meetings to let us know about, especially with Measure M right now. That's the big hot topic, and what they're going to do to move forward, so.
So is there anybody else who could maybe make that?
Does it have to be a council member?
Uh, well, these are liaisons.
Oh, I'm sorry, liaisons, never mind.
So, yes.
And that's a quarterly meeting?
And they usually, I mean, when, when I was going to those as the library commissioner, they were oftentimes, at least back then, like an hour, an hour and a half max.
Yeah, they, they don't go very long typically.
Yeah. And usually, you meet over in the Rona Park Library?
Yeah, we meet in the...
You know, I, I could probably do that, since it's relatively close to work.
I just ask a question, though. Is Lisa still a member?
No, she's, no, she's no longer on that.
She's not? Okay. Just checking. So you, you think you could do that?
I can give it a shot. I don't know what my calendar will be in February, April, June, August, October, December, on the 3rd, Tuesday.
And again, I think one thing I'll say is that, I think, well, I've seen different council members from both Rona Park and Katati come through in the years I did the commissioner's job. But it was oftentimes, there was no one there from one city or the other, or both. I, I just politely would say it's not uber critical, because I also filled that position before I got on as commissioner. And the, the council liaisons kind of give a bit of an update. It's not like you're going to be able to talk about, well, you know, at our bookmobile, which we don't even have anymore, right? So, I mean, there's not a whole bunch to contribute, but you're there more as a sounding board, and if there's issues that can be brought back to the community, you know, that was something that was done in the past. So you want to just, you want to try it?
Sure.
See how that works. Let us know how it goes.
The next meeting is next Tuesday, or is coming Tuesday, the 16th, at 4:00, and I can attend that with you if you'd like, so I can introduce you to everyone and...
And I'll check to see if I'm available on the 16th.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay.
You did it.
We did. We went through the list in a relatively efficient manner, or not. Did we miss anything? I know we didn't go, didn't skip over anything, but I think nothing we, that wasn't on the list. All right. Let, let's, let's move to the city manager's report. So we'll hear from the acting city manager. Damian?
Thank you, Mayor. So since we're talking about bookmobiles, I thought I'd mention that the, the Free Bookmobile does make monthly visits to Katati. And as I think everyone knows here already, the bookmobile promotes literacy and the love of reading by giving away high-quality books to access challenged people throughout the region. And in particular, children, families, and seniors living in rural or low-income areas. And the next scheduled visit to Katati for the bookmobile is December 21st at Oliver's Market from 1:30 to 3:00 PM. And their monthly schedule changes, but can be checked on the website, which is freebookmobile.org, or by calling them, which is on the website as well. And then, also, I just wanted to let everybody know that one of our local Katati businesses, Risk Management Services at 8,000 Old Ridwood Highway, that's at the corner of Old Red and George, the owner of that business, Ken Maolini, delivered a bunch of toys to the police station this, this morning. And it was, it's part of the toy drive that you announced in the announcements earlier. But it was a, a large haul that arrived at one time and garnered quite a bit of attention. So that was exciting. And then on some more police news, Thomas Page Academy has requested a police officer to speak at their sixth grade through eighth grade assembly on Thursday, December 11th. And the topics will include digital citizenship, which I assume is like social media, how to use social media, and not do something you'll regret, yeah. Respect, responsibility, bullying, and dress code reminder. And so and dress code reminder, and so, uh, Catanas officer will be assigned to participate in that discussion. And, um, also, the California Transportation Commission will be hearing that park-and-ride item tomorrow, so that's exciting. It's on their, yeah, it's on their consent calendar item. It's, uh...
Consent.
Like, one of a hundred items, under item 50 on the consent calendar.
Wow.
So, there's a good chance it'll get approved.
Yeah.
But hopefully we'll have an update on that later in the week. And then, um, and then finally, as everyone, I think, knows, there's, uh, there's a storm advisory for later this week, and, um, the police department has issued a NICSAL alert for that in case anyone's not currently aware of the storm coming in, and, um, Public Works has arranged for, um, sand and sandbags for Catanas residents if the storm gets bad enough that there's significant flooding at the courtyard, so we'll just monitor that, and if the need arises, then, um, we'll open up the courtyard and make it available to Catanas residents.
Damian? Can we, um, if that need arises, can we maybe put a note on the, on the board down there so people kind of know?
Uh, yeah, we certainly can. Yeah, the marquee.
You know, one thing, too...
I'm not sure what's on there right now, but...
Yeah, but...
Oh.
It was kind of wordy, whatever was on there.
Tomorrow, we'll have the congratulations on the 2015 mayor and vice mayor.
Oh, perfect, maybe perfect opportunity.
Maybe there's room for sandbags below that.
Well, maybe.
Long as it doesn't say wind instead of sand, we're okay.
Yeah, yeah.
In the past, typically, it's been just, just the congrats, so we'll, I'll let you, I'll let you all decide how you want to handle that.
Yeah, we'll have to wordsmith that one, but we also could put a headline on the website as well.
Yeah.
With the pending storm that's coming in, I know I'll be sending a press release out tomorrow about point raise issues, can, um, is there an opportunity to maybe have Rubud Empire Disposal come through and do an additional street sweeping? The only reason I'm asking is, a lot of times, you know, it's the leaves that are gonna get down into the culverts off the streets, and, and again, you know, if people are parked in the street, there's nothing you can do about it. I mean, I go around, like, about five houses either side of me, and I just scoop them out of the, whatever, it's not a ditch, but whatever, that's called a curb, curb of the street, um, and I don't, I don't know, it's kind of late notice for them to come out, 'cause this is Tuesday night, and tomorrow's Wednesday, and the storm's supposed to hit Thursday, so maybe they can't, but it's just a thought, and, and I don't know, maybe there's a spot or two in town that's worse than others, or just something to think about, 'cause that's usually where you're gonna get a lot of water backing up, is when those culverts fill and comes backwards.
Yeah, they, um, they currently sweep once a week, and...
Right.
But their schedule, I think, is...
Fridays.
Is it? Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
But it's a two-day schedule, they split it.
Mayor.
Yeah, they actually split the schedule. It's not all, all in one day.
No, I know.
So, it's...
Right, I mean, my neighborhood, the bird section, I know they do Friday, and I'm just wondering, you know, it's probably a ridiculous request at this stage of the game, 'cause I'm sure they're probably really busy, but if they're available, and if there's, if there's, like, one or two areas, maybe, that are really critical, that just have piles of European sycamore leaves that are about the size of a Volkswagen bug when they fall, all right?
Have you been to Eagle Drive?
Yes, but that's pretty clean, actually, Eagle Drive. Um, are there any comments or questions for Damian on his report? Go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and go into, thank you very much, go into City Council Reports. I will start with Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, I had the pleasure of going to the tree lighting, and I want to thank staff. You guys did just an outstanding job, and I know, in particular, Vicki worked really, really, really hard on it, and, um, I think a good time was had by all, even though it was very, very, very muddy. Um, I, I think it worked out, and I appreciated, uh, being co-elf with, um, the Mayor Pro Tem, so that was great. Um, then, the only other thing is, I attended the North Bay Division Executive Committee meeting yesterday, and we went over the league goals and took a look at the schedule for 2015, uh, when the quarterly meetings will be and what the subject topics are, and, um, they have some pretty interesting topics coming up for next year, so as soon as that gets published, I will, um, have that forwarded to you. And that's all I have to report.
Very good. Councilmember Lammon?
Well, I think we mentioned, uh, the upcoming proposed Legislative Committee field trip, so I'll keep you abreast of that. Sonoma Clean Power, I think we mentioned last time, Rona Park has come on board. Uh, coming up on the 15th, we'll be going down to Seapetaloo and expect another interesting discussion down there, and hopeful for a good outcome. This month, we're taking on the bulk of our, uh, accounts. I think it's about just under 150,000 new accounts, so if you ever feel like you're a little too busy for staff during December, it could be worse. You could work for Sonoma Clean Power, at least during December. It's, it's gonna be a busy month, but I, there may be a couple or two, but I think it'll go pretty smoothly. It's been vetted out pretty good, so that's what we have going on.
Excellent. Vice Mayor Skilman. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Um, no, I was gonna echo, um, Councilmember Harvey said about the tree lighting. It was just amazing, and actually having, uh, goodie bags to give all of the kids rather than just handing them a candy cane. I think, I was telling Vicki earlier, I think some of the kids were more excited about that than they were about sitting on Santa's lap and posing for their parents. So, that, that was just an enormous amount of, and the, the way it was staged with all of the boxes that were gift-wrapped and stuff, so it really was amazing, so I wanted to echo, um, and, uh, say thank you for all of that time and effort. It really showed, and it was great, despite the low turnout, and, but it was fantastic.
Absolutely. It's what you have when you do it on the night of a tropical storm. You know, um, the, uh, it did, it did, I thought the event, I thought the event was great.
It's never upset us.
No, it's never stopped us before. Um, I thought the event was definitely great, and I think staff actually, in a very subversive way, has found a way to stymie my public talking, and that is to... To, yeah, to get Santa to show up just when I'm starting to talk into the microphone. Sirens on the trucks going off, and I had ten minutes of announcements to do in about sixteen seconds, so very clever. I, I appreciate that. I won't forget it, let's put it that way.
I did try to walk slowly with Santa, just so you know.
And I appreciated that, too. Didn't help a lot, but that's fine. We got it all done, and, uh, it was, it was a great event, so thanks to everybody who helped out with that. So, I had a very interesting meeting with a woman from Sonoma State University who had met with, uh, Prue Draper and Jenny Filetti over the Veronda Filetti property, and I know, Vicki, you had spoken to her, maybe Damian as well, so she has, um, she's doing her thesis on the history of that property, and, um, somehow contacted me, saying, "Oh, you know, I hear that you've got this design for this interpretive panel." It was good because there was a date that was incorrect on, on the information that was given to me, but I never included it on the panel, so we were safe there, but, um, but it, the conversation was really great, and I think it's gonna lead to, some of her recommendations are gonna include maybe some other education on this property here, um, maybe we reduce the number of sheep, you know, there's a whole bunch of options we're gonna look at. So, it'll be great to get that report once she's done with that, and I think, um, I have taken some new images of the field now that there's some nice green grass coming through. I'm waiting for some really kind of storm just passing through with blue and big white cumulus clouds, so I think we can relook at that, and, and I'll bring that back to staff, and, um, I, uh, also agree that, and I already said that the tree lighting was a great, uh, event, and don't forget that next Monday evening, which is the 15th, at 4:00 PM, we'll be having a ribbon cutting at the Train Depot, so that will be a significant feature. And lastly, uh, the chief and I had met with a woman from the DA's office, and I had a conversation with her maybe a couple months ago, and then the chief also followed up on that, um, and there's a concept that we're hoping to bring, and I just want to bring this out to the council now for just a thought, but a concept of bringing back with the help of the DA's office, um, and tentatively calling it something like empowering residents and creating safer communities. The city of Sonoma, it has also met with the same liaison from the DA's office. They haven't taken it much further than where we are now, was the impression I had gotten, yeah. So, um, I think the goals are to have, uh, in the spring, try to set up some kind of a town hall meeting at whatever location, and hear from residents what they think the concerns are for a safer community. What are their, what are the crime things that are happening in their neighborhoods that they're seeing, and just get that feedback and that input. We certainly have statistics from the police department, so we know, you know, from a statistics standpoint, what's going on, um, and the goal of the DA's office is to really get out and do more education where they can, and so this could also lead to, one thing we talked about was leading to, um, some kind of brief, uh, forums or an educational series that we could go to the Charles Street Apartments and talk to the seniors over there about, you know, help that they could potentially get, and what to do when situations arise, so, um, it's just all in the planning stages. Uh, that's kind of, unless the chief, if you want to add anything to that?
No, I'm pretty busy, I've pretty much done.
Wow, that, that was a two-hour meeting that took six seconds to summarize. It's scary, but, um, so anyway, that's kind of where it's going. Uh, this woman is a, um, she is the Deputy District Attorney, Esther Lemus, you know her. She spoke well of you, and, um, this is not necessarily something that the mayor will have to follow up on. I think I was contacted as mayor. Um, I'd be happy to continue moving this ball forward, and, and, you know, we'll see what happens. You know, we would advertise through their office and through the city, and see how many people would show up to some kind of a community forum on police-related issues, and just see where it goes. Yeah?
Do we have any, um, that type of information based upon the sessions that happened for the general plan? Does it seem like safety was one of the topics that came up when we had sessions? We, we just might have some, here's what we have, you know, to kind of get it started based upon general plan input?
Yeah, I'm trying to, I, I don't know that we got, um, into that kind of detail. I mean, um, I'll, I'll look back through the general plan and, and provide it to outgoing mayor.
There's probably some very broad goals, like having a safer community. I can, I can see that being a part of a general plan. It may not have gotten down into the weeds, though, necessarily, whereas this will. That's kind of the goal.
Yeah, I was thinking more like, you know, when we did the little post-it things on the little, you know, when we did the little community sessions, the little post-its and...
Our priorities, yeah, our top priorities. I'll look, I'll pull that sheet up and look back through.
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
So, there'll be more to come on that, but, you know, we're kind of hoping right now of, uh, trying to plan this in the spring, is, I think, as far as we've gotten, and, um, I just wanted to bring it to this committee. I told her I would, to see if council or staff would have,